All right.
What about that?
All right. Time you want me to start, Crystal, I will.
Yes, we're ready.
You're ready? Okay. Good evening, welcome to the City Council Successor Agency and the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority. This is the regular meeting in the city of San Carlos, City Council meeting, June 9th, 2020. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Do we have any changes to the order of the agenda tonight? All right. Uh, not here in the night, I'm gonna, we'll start now with, uh, we have a couple of presentations. We are, uh, tonight, we are, we are presenting proclamation recognizing June as Pride Month. Uh, and I had the pleasure of, of attending the flag raising, uh, event last Friday at City Hall steps with, uh, three of my fellow council members. And the declaration says, or proclamation says in part, that the month of June is designated as Pride Month to commemorate the dedication, bravery, and sacrifice of those who led the 1969 Stonewall uprising in New York City. Respect for these rights and freedoms lies with each individual, and each of us can play a major role in enhancing human rights and supporting freedom from discrimination. And whereas disregard and contempt for human rights have resulted in acts which have outraged the conscience of the citizens of San Carlos. And whereas recent events of racial discrimination and continuing police brutality nationwide against the black community have demonstrated the disparate treatment of racial minorities and that what they experience in our country. And whereas the powerlessness born of having an unequal voice and valid concerns about unfair treatment dismissed begets frustration that in some communities has led to violence. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I Ron Collins, Mayor of the city of San Carlos, on behalf of the entire city council hereby condemned white supremacy, racism, and violence in the wake of recent local and national tragedies and takes a firm stance against police brutality. The city of San Carlos reaffirms its faith and value in fundamental human rights and in the dignity and worth of the human person and in the equal rights of men and women, and is determined to promote social progress and better standards of life. Toward this goal, the city council has established as a core value and priority of the city of San Carlos, the fostering of a welcoming and inclusive environment for all people regardless of race, ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, or place of origin. Be it further proclaimed that the city of San Carlos is committed to becoming an increasingly welcoming, inclusive, and representative community, responsive to historically underrepresented and underserved communities, particularly communities of color, immigrants, and refugees. The city of San Carlos further commits to continuing to work to eliminate racial disparities and ensure that every San Carlos resident has the opportunity to thrive. In recognition of the conflicts between Americans of color and some law enforcement officials, the city of San Carlos commits to ensuring that systemic procedures and prevention systems are in place and that all police officers who serve our community never resort to the use of excessive force. The San Carlos City Council urges protesters to express their demands for justice peacefully and has instructed police officers to take the utmost care and not inflame the current situation even more with any use of excessive force. The mission statement of the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office proclaims that law enforcement pledges to promote public trust through fair and impartial policing and will treat all persons with dignity, compassion, and respect. The San Mateo County Sheriff's Office will continue to demonstrate its commitment to protecting life and property and preserving the public peace by acting professionally with integrity and without prejudice, even in the most challenging circumstances when no one is watching and on or off duty. San Mateo County Sheriff's Office provides our community with excellent service by respecting and upholding the rights and freedoms of all people in all interactions, free from bias or stereotype, seeking to understand, to help others by making a difference. The San Mateo County Sheriff's Office will continue to strive to promote an environment that encourages continuous improvement and innovation, be leaders in modern policing, act on input and feedback from our communities and colleagues, constantly implement best practices, and explore alternative solutions to current issues. Leadership and personnel of the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office and the city of San Carlos expect all law enforcement officers to follow current policies, including those found in the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office Operations Policy Manual concerning the use of force, bias-based training, use of tasers and other control devices and techniques, and continue to demonstrate the excellent police work exhibited by our San Carlos Police Bureau. Sheriff's Office personnel have committed to work with the San Carlos community to strengthen and rebuild relationships in the community due to incidents of excessive use of force by other law enforcement officers in our county and continue to serve our community in a professional and supportive manner. So with that, uh, I've, again, it was a little long, but with everything that's happening in our community today, I think it was vitally important that, uh, this city state how it feels about, uh, everything that has happened in the last couple of weeks. It's not been pleasant for any of us to watch. All right, we are now going to move on to, uh, public comment. Uh, anybody wishing to address the city council?
Are we, can we say anything just following your words? I'd just make a couple of comments about the proclamation.
I, uh, I apologize, I kinda jumped into the next thing, and, uh, yes, if you would like to make a comment, please do so.
Thank you, Mayor Collins. And I just wanna say, you know, thank you for putting forward the proclamation. I really appreciate it, how it reflects our values as a community and, and the first proclamation as well. I think it's important that we recognize both communities and, and show that we're doing our part to be inclusive and supportive. Um, I just wanna say a couple of words about the events the last couple of weeks. I mean, for me, obviously, and for many, as the death of George Floyd Minneapolis was horrifying, disturbing, and just plain wrong. And those involved need to be prosecuted, but this is not sort of a, you know, a one-time event. This is a systemic problem that we have in our country, and, and it shouldn't be happening in America today. So I, you know, we have to change, and I hope that the protest and George Floyd's death will mark a turning point in our relationships with, with each other. And I've spent a lot of time thinking about this, it's sort of what I can do individually as a person and, you know, as a, as a member of the city council to better myself and better the community. And I do believe, as you pointed out, that, you know, most law enforcement is working with the community and, and in the community to make it safe and doesn't reflect what happened in Minnesota. But I do think we, I agree that we need to look at the best practices and look at de-escalation and bias training and understand kind of what we can do to make a difference and how we can enact change. Um, and then secondly, I, you know, I, I think this is not just about the relationship between the law enforcement and the black community. I think it's, it's about race and racism in our society, and it's about our relationship with each other. So while I will bring this up at agenda setting, um, my wife Allison and her friend Hillary were talking about this topic, and I, I wanted to share their suggestion because I thought it was a good one, and I'll, again, I'll bring it up later. But I would, you know, suggest that we create something like a sister city program with a similar-sized community that has a, a large black population here in the U.S. And that we, families could volunteer and partner, be partnered with families in that sister city so that we can start having that conversation about what it's like to be black in America. And so we can have a conversation, understand how we can make changes and bring each other together and work at it as an individual level to make our society better. So I think this is an idea that can present many other opportunities and moving forward. And I hope that when I bring it up at agenda setting that my colleagues will, will agree, and thank you again.
Thank you, Adam. Mark, you wanted to lend your thoughts?
Yes, thank you, uh, Mayor Collins. Thank you, Adam. Um, I just wanted to make an observation. I too have some things that I am gonna suggest during agenda setting. Um, and I very much appreciate the spirit of what you described, Ron, and, and the, the way it applies to the vast majority of law enforcement interactions, even in San Mateo County and San Carlos. But we would be remiss, in my opinion, if we did not recognize that, for example, from the reports I've heard from people who were on scene in San Mateo when there was a peaceful protest there, and there was a group, uh, you probably heard about, that split off and was heading over towards, I think maybe even accidentally, towards the Hillsdale Mall. And, uh, uh, mutual aid deployment took place with the sheriff's office personnel fulfilling that role. Uh, and the people who, the peaceful protesters were apparently very taken aback by the, uh, appearance of, uh, to their eyes, highly militarized, uh, you know, dressed for battle, uh, uh, law enforcement people. And what I'm leading up to is I think that, that I like sister city idea, we can do, but I think we need to take a hard look at what's happening even in our own community and with the law enforcement agencies that we're using. Not so much because I necessarily think they're doing anything, you know, that, that is reprehensible or anything like that. I think generally do a great job, but I think we need to start at home. And we need to ask some questions about how law enforcement is structured and delivered in San Mateo County and San Carlos and make sure that we're comfortable with everything that's going on. But yeah, I'll bring it up more in more detail. Thank you.
Laura?
Thank you, Mayor Collins, and thank you for your remarks earlier and the two proclamations that you shared. Um, I too look forward to discussing how we as a council can work together to ensure the values that we've stated as a council that San Carlos is a welcoming and inclusive city. Um, I also want to thank you, um, for the LGBTQ, um, Pride Month proclamation and recognize Dana Johnson, who is here with us this evening, who is a commissioner for the San Mateo County, uh, LGBTQ, uh, commission, and, uh, appreciate all the good works, uh, that Dana and her colleagues do on behalf of the LGBTQ community here in our county.
Uh, thank you, Laura. Sarah?
Thank you. I, I'd like to echo the comments of Adam and Laura. I'm very proud that San Carlos can issue both of these proclamations tonight and reinforce that San Carlos is committed to becoming increasingly welcoming, inclusive, and responsive those who are historically underrepresented and underserved. And, um, like my colleagues, I plan to bring up some ideas in the agenda setting portion of, um, you know, ways that we as a local government can take action to listen to our community and then do the work to, um, seek the improvements that, that may be needed. So thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. All right, uh, let us move on.
Sorry, through the chair. We, we do have a public comment for this item.
Oh, okay. Uh, all right.
Okay, go ahead and let them in now.
Do we have more than one, Crystal?
I just see the, I just see the one.
Okay.
Good, good evening caller with a phone number ending in six two seven. Thank you for joining us tonight. You will have approximately two minutes to address the council. And if you'd like, please state your name for the record prior to, uh, starting your comments. You are now unmuted.
Thank you. My name is Matt McIntyre. I live on Walnut Street. Uh, I asked the city council to request that the San Mateo County Organization of Sheriff Sergeants present a detailed plan for the elimination of harassment, intimidation, military-style equipment, and excessive use of force to Sheriff Bolanos and the city council as a precondition for negotiation of all future contracts with the city of San Carlos. Thank you for listening.
All right. Uh, thank you, Matt. Uh, did anyone else request to speak, Crystal?
No, I do not see any other callers at this time.
Okay. So I, well, we were gonna move into general public comments, so I'm wondering whether or not anyone else is, uh, wanting to speak at this point. Are we gonna show the screen that has the phone number on it, or can they see that?
Yes, I am pulling it up.
Okay. Well, uh, why don't we do this, since we do have a fairly extensive agenda, um, tonight? Um, why don't we move on briefly? And Crystal, if you'll just let me know, uh, just send me a message that there are, there are people that who wish to speak. We can always, um, go back and hear their comments.
Okay.
Okay, um, for the moment, we're gonna move on to council communications and announcements. I'm trying to see if I've got my, um, Sarah?
Thank you, Ron. I have two very quick announcements. As you know, I sit on the library governing board, and curbside pickup is now available at our San Carlos library. Um, the instructions to put a book on hold and then figure out how to, um, make an appointment to come pick up your book is online at smcl.org. So that's a great resource to have now in the summertime to check out books from our library. And, um, I've also received some public, uh, feedback, uh, from residents who think that the new sidewalks on San Carlos Avenue are just looking great. And so I wanted to give kudos to our Public Works Department, and everyone on staff has worked on making that project come together. It's really, um, looking incredible out there, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Sarah. Um, Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, a little slow on the unmuting there. Um, I have, I think, three just brief announcements. One is actually, uh, a request to Steve, uh, Steve Machida and Jeff that I met today with some residents who live on Burnham Court who have a, uh, fairly serious, it looks to me, and growing problem with the condition of the road in, in front of their homes. So I was hoping, uh, Steve, if you could, uh, if you have the time, if you could give me, uh, shoot me an email, let me know when we might be able to meet jointly out there with the folks that talk to them about it. Um, the, uh, uh, main things I wanted to mention are, uh, uh, I was glad to see that a number of our restaurants, uh, had reopened, uh, I believe, starting last Friday or Saturday. Um, but I want to remind people that, uh, you know, I've gotten lots of reports, I think some of the rest of us have as well, of, uh, a lot of, uh, uh, in the COVID-19 environment, kind of questionable social behavior out there. Uh, non-household groups getting together, people sitting closer, really close to each other, some bars in operation. I think there were even a couple of instances of where restaurants apparently misunderstood that indoor dining, as far as I know, is still not allowed. It's only outdoor dining. Um, and, uh, you know, it's really important that we follow, that we all follow the health regulations. This virus is not gone yet, uh, and, and, uh, it would be really sad if, you know, if, if, uh, we end up seeing a huge spike in infections, which would lead to an increase in the number of fatalities, unnecessary fatalities. So I just asked the restaurant owners and the patrons to kind of be sensitive to that. And last item is, um, actually related a little bit, Ron, tangentially, to what the, the long proclamation that you, you took us through. Um, and it has to do with protests in San Carlos. There are groups in San Carlos that I've heard from who would like to stage, uh, you know, vigils and, and protests supporting, uh, the movement that started with George Floyd's, uh, murder. But, uh, frankly, they are being suppressed in their plans because out of, out of fear of what the sheriff's department indoor the city may do to them. Uh, and I don't mean in terms of, you know, uh, clubbing them or anything like that. I mean, literally, they're, they're afraid that they're gonna be arrested or something if it turns out they have a hundred and two people show up at a rally. So, um, I was very pleased and impressed with what Redwood City did to manage a much larger and frankly, much less socially-distanced, uh, protest that they had that apparently went off reasonably well. Um, and I would encourage, uh, city staff and the sheriff's department to take a lesson from that and see if there's not a way that, that, uh, we can make sure that people in San Carlos who want to express their views and solidarity at, at this rough time in our nation's history feel that, feel that it's safe for them to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, Laura?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. Um, I have two items that I'd like to report out on. Uh, the first is Peninsula Clean Energy has appropriated $500,000 for a portable battery program for medically vulnerable residents in San Mateo County for use during the PG&E, uh, expected power shutdowns. So I know that that was a idea that was generated at our, uh, community convening last year on the topic. Um, further, uh, I just want to reiterate, um, the fact that the funding model for our public schools is broken. And while San Carlos School District is preparing for the new school year, elaborate safety protocols will also be required to address COVID-19. This, along with a potential return to 2008 funding levels as recently proposed by Governor Newsom, is untenable. The state legislature recently approved a revised version of the state budget, which rejects the proposed funding cuts for schools, and this will be voted on on June 15th. As time is of the essence, I plan to independently send a letter to Governor Newsom, State Senator Jerry Hill, and Speaker Pro Tempore State Assembly Member Kevin Mullen to lend my support for the revised budget that keeps our school funding whole. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Laura, and I would be happy to sign that letter with you if you allow.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Collins.
Okay. Uh, Adam?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. And, uh, Laura, I'm, I was planning on sending individual letters as well, and if we can coordinate, happy to, to participate in that as well.
Have it on, have them all typed up. I'll, just, we'll add your signatures, make sure you're comfortable with the content.
Uh, I just had a couple of quick things. One, I attended the Healthy Cities Tutoring Event, their rec, tutor recognition. It was a nice event, uh, that they were able to do online for all the work that they do in the community. And then, uh, just wanted to mention that, uh, since I sit on the SBWMA board, we have, the transfer station is back open for, if you bring trash and bulky collection back open, but the recycling center is still closed. And so if you have recycling or other sort of, uh, hazardous materials that the county is accepting, the hazardous materials at Tower Row, and you can contact, uh, this recology, and they'll help you make an appointment, uh, for that. And then for cardboard, you can still, if you put it on the side of the cart, flatten down, they, they will take it until this recycling center is, is back open again. Uh, they're just doing some improvements to the transfer station, and so it, that's, they need the space to, to use all the equipment. But that's it.
Thank you, Adam. I just have a couple of things. I have the, uh, privilege of sitting on both the Caltrain and the Samtrans boards. Samtrans ridership, as everyone knows, is down quite significantly. Part of it's because of social, uh, distancing requirements, and the rest of it is because of shelter in place. But all the rides right now are free. Anyone who wants to take Samtrans can take it, uh, without having to pay a fare. And Caltrain also, uh, approved a new policy that will give up to 50% discounts to riders who are economically disadvantaged, and that should be starting, uh, at the end of the summer or first part of the fall, as soon as, uh, Samtrans or Caltrain can coordinate with the MTC. Okay, that is all I have. Next, we're gonna move on to the consent calendar. Uh, these are items that will be approved in, uh, one motion unless anybody wants to pull an item. Uh, are there any that want to pull an item or make a comment, Laura?
Uh, Mayor Collins, I'd like to pull item number, uh, seven I.
Seven I, okay. All right. Um, all right, is there a motion for the rest of the items?
I move to approve the consent calendar, items seven A through H, J, and K.
All right, we have a motion and a second. And Crystal, would you like to call the roll, please?
Yes, Councilmember Act?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Uh, I vote yes on all the items, except I vote no on item seven D, the $70 million transfer to the unfunded, from the unfunded liability reserve.
Okay, noted. Uh, Vice Mayor Palmer Lohin? Oops, you're muted.
Yes.
Thank you. And Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay, uh, we're gonna move on now to reports, uh, reports to council. Item eight A's, we're gonna have, now have an update on the coronavirus, uh, COVID-19. And I believe that is going to be, Mr. Malpe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, I will try to make this, uh, report brief, and then I'll hand it off to our, uh, Chief of Police, Mark Dury, to add some additional comments. Figure out how to advance the slides.
Mayor Collins, uh, while we're, uh, waiting for this to come up, can I make a quick comment?
Yes, go right ahead.
Yeah, so it just occurred to me that, um, given the, my proposal on the letter, we probably shouldn't have more than two of us sign the letter without council action to, uh, the, the school funding issue, so just wanted to acknowledge that.
Okay, all right.
Through the chair, um, I, I plan on bringing that up, uh, during our agenda setting.
Through the chair, I, I plan on bringing that up during our agenda setting items as an idea.
Okay. All right, good idea. All right.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. To update you on the San Mateo County health orders, the county continues to update these orders on a weekly basis. May 29th, the county issued a new health order to allow alignment with the state guidelines. And the following were allowed to open with restrictions effective June 1st. Retail stores, houses of worship now open. June 4th, a new health order was issued that was effective June 6th, and that was the opening of restaurants for outdoor dining that Councilmember Obert mentioned a little earlier. And I would echo the council members' sentiments and really ask our community, who has really been wonderful in terms of, you know, embracing these health orders and really, you know, taking it upon themselves to try to keep the, the vulnerable in our, in our community and in our families sequestered from this dangerous virus. It's great that restaurants are open for outdoor dining. And as you know, we have an item on the agenda later to discuss that particular issue in greater detail. But it is going to fall to not just the restaurant owners, but also the patrons to make sure that, that they're following all the rules as the outdoor dining continues and takes place. If we're not successful in, in this process of reopening things and we see a big spike in cases, we may be forced by the health officers to go backwards and close things down. And I don't think any, anybody wants that or wants to give up the progress that we've made. The city staff is working with and, and sending our code enforcement folks downtown and to all our restaurants and businesses to make sure that folks are understanding the order and are in compliance. And we'll talk a little bit more about that specific to the proposal for downtown closures and on-street dining later this evening. In addition to the restaurants, charter boats can begin service. Indoor funerals can be, I think, held is what that's meant to say. The state, the budget deadline of June 15th, state leaders are, are very busy developing a budget with the significant decreases in revenue and expenses. Budget reserves will be used to fund the priority areas, including K through 12 schools and unemployment in the state. If the federal government fails to provide relief, funding will be more challenging for the state. But they're committed to making every effort, including deploying a significant use of state reserves to meet these funding challenges. To expand a little bit on the discussion earlier, as you can see, the, the budget deadline of June 15th is coming right up. And so in anticipation of that, the city staff have also sent a letter to our state representatives encouraging them to, to continue to fund the, the K through 14 schools at, at the existing inappropriate levels and not the larger cuts that have originally been proposed in the, in the governor's budget. The, the legislature reached consensus to ask that the governor's budget that may revise be rescinded with all those cuts. And, and that is the effort that, that we're promoting that it sounds like individual council members will also be sending letters on and, and we may have a proposal from a council member later this evening relating to that as well. I think it's important for folks in our community to know that they too can send letters to their state representatives and not even just their representatives, but, you know, anybody on a committee working on this issue in Sacramento to have, make sure that their voices are heard in this effort to ensure that our schools get the appropriate funding and our kids get the education that they deserve. Community support reminders, we're just asking everybody to continue to follow the city on social media, Nextdoor, Facebook and Twitter, along with our website at www.cityofsancarlos.org/coronavirus. Our hotline number is also in effect still at 802-4347. If you're having any sort of difficulties with necessities or needing some sort of help of a non-emergency nature, please feel free to call that number or call the county hotline at 211. The City Emergency Operations Center is continuing its virtual operation and working for the plan for the slow reopening of city facilities. Responding to and communicating changes to the county health orders as they are released, seeking reimbursement of COVID-19 related expenses from the appropriate state and federal government agencies. Services and expenditure impacts, all our facilities remain close to the public. The Adult Community Center is prepared to temporarily, to temporarily open if needed as a cooling center during potential heat waves this summer. And the staff is right now at the department level, working to prepare budget reductions for my consideration as part of a package that will be presented to the council with multiple options for the council to, to address any budget shortfalls that are being anticipated for this coming fiscal year. Our FEMA reimbursement requests to date total $426,000. FEMA assesses the eligibility of expenditures and those deemed eligible are reimbursed at 75% of the original cost to the city. And as you can see, the first reimbursements here are listed below. Youth summer camps are beginning June 15th. We'll be serving 84 children during the first session. Tennis courts reopened on June 1st. We've had 38 total reservations, 18 completed reservations, 20 future reservations. And I was asked to talk a little bit, I believe there's a $13 reservation charge and, and why, what the thought was behind doing that. This is something that the council had asked us to, to look at, you know, the reopening of tennis courts and then the health order addressed it. So we looked at what other cities in our area were doing as we weren't the first one to be reopening and sort of copied that model. And I think the $13 is really more to recognize that our tennis courts are a limited resource. And so we don't want folks to just fill up all the reservation slots and then not show up. So we're required under the health order to provide some level of management, but we're also sensitive to the fact that we don't, we don't want people to just book the courts, you know, willy-nilly and not use them. And so it just allows them to have a little bit of skin in the game in terms of making sure that they're booking it and using it. And if they're not, it can be released for others. In turn, so it's an available resource for the whole community. And this is not something that, you know, as soon as the health orders stop requiring us to actively manage, we'll return, all the courts will reopen and we'll return to our previous model for the tennis courts. So that ends my presentation. I'm going to hand it over to Chief Dury now for just, I think, a few more slides.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Mark Dury, Police Chief. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to see if I can, Crystal, how do I move the slide, the next slide down?
You should be able to just press the arrow key.
Okay, I'll try. And it doesn't work.
Okay, I can, I can help. I'll take over.
Yeah, you can. I'll just tell you next slide. I only have a few.
Sure.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to discuss what kind of our plan is for, discuss our national response and kind of our, our statements from the sheriff and I and our, how we've responded to this as far as the protests and our training, how we train here in the sheriff's office and how, how we look forward moving forward from this. As far as the, the national response to concerns about policing, in response to concerns about policing, there have been a number of peaceful protests throughout the country. These peaceful demonstrations are a reflection of the pain and anger that people are feeling right now. My hope is that we will lead to healing and hopefully lead to a better understanding and compassion and have improvement in our systems of justice within our community. The sheriff and I have released a statement, released two statements, one from Sheriff Alonso and one is me as your police chief. These statements recognize the death of Mr. Floyd in the custody of law enforcement and describe the policies and procedures that the sheriff's office will follow to ensure that this doesn't happen here in San Carlos and in our sheriff's office communities. As far as the local response and impact to San Carlos, San Mateo County law enforcement professionals are working together to promote peaceful protests. Thus far, San Carlos has remained relatively unscathed by these events, but many of our businesses have been impacted. One cannot drive through the city or downtown and notice the border of windows and doors. It's a shame that our businesses had to experience both the COVID-19 and the acts that have angered the, those by the tragedy occurred in Minnesota at the hands of law enforcement. Crystal, can I have the next slide? Over the past two weeks, the sheriff's office has responded to countless mutual aid requests from other law enforcement agencies, both in and out of county. We've responded both to San Francisco, Oakland on numerous occasions, sending up to 60 officers to both locations. And in in-county, we've assisted other cities such as Redwood City, San Mateo, East Palo Alto, Belmont, Millbrae, and South San Francisco. And as of last Sunday, we assisted Santa Cruz County Sheriff's Office in the unfortunate death of the officer or the sheriff sergeant that was ambushed in that terrible tragedy in the Santa Cruz Hills. In San Carlos, when we've had planned protests in our neighboring cities, we've always had extra staffing within the city. And we will continue to have extra staffing as planned protests come in the future. And we also have extra staffing when our neighboring cities have planned protests, whether it's Belmont, Redwood City and such, so we can assist them and safeguard the city as well. And we also continually monitor social media for any upcoming protests, so we will always be prepared. As far as our, I'd like to touch a little on our sheriff's office training and our preparedness. As far as our use of force and defensive tactics training, the sheriff's office sworn staff receives training in use of force and defensive tactics, both in the police academy and the core academy. The core academy is our corrections academy that our correctional officers attend. And then again, every two years throughout the rest of their careers. The ongoing training requires and includes a de-escalation training as well. There are various forms of training, including crisis intervention training. And that's fit into a general concept of de-escalation training. All sheriff's office sworn employees are required to attend a 40-hour CIT course. This is primary focus on handling incidents involving those in crisis. This, these concepts are taught to be utilized in various situations requiring, requiring de-escalation. Because of this training, we find the reduction in our use of force incidences because patrol deputies become so proficient in talking to people in crisis and peacefully resolving these types of situations. I will touch more on this topic later on in my presentation. I'd like to touch on fair and impartial policing now. The entire sheriff's office has also received training on fair and impartial policing. We contracted with the Fair and Impartial Policing LLC to provide the training to our entire organization. Every sworn person from the sheriff on down has attended this training. They also have, they've also provided the trainer, the trainer course, so our personnel can continue to provide the training to new employees and refresher training on this very subject every year. The training provides objective and progressive look implicit bias and how it affects and impacts our society. We receive positive and organizational feedback from many of our attendees who attend this critical role. And they have, and they've had positive feedback. And they enjoy the class. And what they would like to do is hopefully build on what they've learned. As far as a new hire and orientation, during our new hire orientation and throughout the field training and jail training programs, there are sections of training centered around discrimination and bias, policy adherence, and countless other relevant topics. Sheriff's trainees are encouraged to ask questions if anything is unclear. While those one-on-one training programs, the training officers evaluate the trainees on a daily basis, offering suggestions for improvement and opportunities to advance their knowledge and understanding. The sheriff's office strongly values diversity and ensures that our hiring reflects the same level of diversity seen in communities we serve. We know that this helps create and reinforce the positive connections and build relationships we already have with our community members. Crystal, I'll take the next slide. Thank you. I'd like to talk a little bit about our policy procedures. We have our Lexible Policy Manual that is online and the mayor indicated in his proclamation, thank you for that, Mayor Collins. Our Lexible Policy Manual is our policy and procedure guide. It is a living document and is adjusted and updated as laws evolve. All sworn staff in our organization are required to know and understand the policies and procedures and are required and understand the policy procedures as well as the updates. There are daily training bulletins that are distributed office-wide, one every day. That highlights the policy and provides a hypothetical scenario and questions the person has to answer. When there is a new updated policy, it is sent out to personnel via our learning management system. It includes the law, the policy, and an explanation behind it. The user must read and acknowledge, have read, that they have read it and take past the provided testing material. The bottom line with all our policy and procedures is that we hold all employees accountable. Our body worn cameras, we've had those for the last year and they pay dividends. All of our sworn staff are assigned body worn cameras, which are to be worn at all times as our policy indicates. The body worn cameras provide us with the following. It provides us with better transparency. First, body worn cameras may result in a better transparency and thus will improve law enforcement accountability. In many communities, there's a lack of trust and confidence in law enforcement. The lack of confidence is exacerbated by questions about encounters between law enforcement and community members that involve the use of force. Video footage captured during these interactions does provide better documentation to help confirm the nature of the events and support the accounts articulated by those involved. Body worn cameras also help us with quicker resolutions. Body worn cameras may lead to a faster resolution of citizen complaints and lawsuits that allege excessive force and other forms of officer misconduct. Investigations in cases that involve inconsistent accounts of the encounter from other officers and citizens are often to be found not sustained and subsequently closed when there's no video footage nor independent or corroborating witnesses. Thus, in turn, this can decrease the public's trust and confidence in law enforcement and increase perceptions that claims of abuse brought against officers will not be properly addressed. Video captured by our body worn cameras will help corroborate these facts and encounters and result in a quicker and more accurate resolution to these incidences. It also provides us with training opportunities. The use of body worn cameras also offers potential opportunities to improve policing through training. Law enforcement trainers and executives can access officer activities and behaviors captured both on body worn cameras. And they can either do it both through self-initiated investigations or the results in calls for service. This is to further enhance professionalism amongst officers and new recruits. Finally, the video footage can be provided to us with opportunities to implement new training strategies and assess, assess the extent to which officers may carry out duties in a manner that this is consistent with assigned initiatives. I'd like to touch on our use of force reporting. Every use of force that the sheriff's office has is reported. It's given its own separate case number and is investigated independently by a sergeant and approved up through the chain of command. We log and track and report every incident of every use of force used in our organization, whether it's in the San Carlos Bureau, any other sheriff's patrol bureau, or our correctional facilities. Any use of force incident that may be deemed out of policy is thoroughly investigated. Each use of force investigation is kept for Each use of force investigation is kept for a minimum of five years for our records retention policy. And we submit our use of force statistics annually to California Department of Justice, uh, so they can staff them accordingly. As far as our citizen complaints and internal investigations, um, all citizen complaints are also logged and tracked and investigated thoroughly. Um, any policy violation will be formally investigated and, uh, via an internal investigation or inquiry. Any sus- any sustained policy violation can result in discipline, up to and including termination, if the sheriff sees fit. All internal investigations are kept for a minimum of five years for our records retention policy, as are the use of forces. And we submit our internal investigation statistics as well to California Department of Justice annually for statistical purposes. Our use of force and internal investigation process is recently automated with a new cloud-based reporting system, which is now state-of-the-art, so the information can be accurately pulled out if needed. Uh, now I'd like to touch on our crisis response efforts. Um, since two thousand and five, the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office has been facilitating the Crisis Intervention Training Academy, often referred to as CIT. The training has been implemented in partnership with the San Mateo County Behavioral Health Recovery Services and the NAMI House, also known as the National Alliance on Mental Illness. CIT is a mandatory training in, in, in service law for law enforcement and it provides education in how to recognize signs where someone may be in crisis due to mental illness or actually emo- and also emotional distress. This is a forty-hour course taught by subject matter experts that supplements the hundred and thirty-six hours of training our law enforcement officers receive in the police academy and the average of four months on the field training program as they complete, as they go through that. In conjunction with the police academy, the field training program and field training programs, CIT provides classroom instruction and practical exercises in key areas meant to strengthen the relationship between law enforcement and the community in areas such as mental illness and conditions, stigma, the effects of trauma, crisis behavior and de-escalation, veteran needs, post-traumatic stress disorder, traumatic brain injuries, suicide, cultural differences and implicit bias, youth resources, adult resources, developmental disabilities, Alzheimer's and dementia issues, and finally suicide by cop. CIT also personalizes the topic of mental illness and illustrates the importance of an appropriate response by exposing our first responders to members of the public who have experienced or live with mental illness. CIT students are exposed to family members of those who live within, with mental illness. These members of the public share with the students their experiences with mental illness, as well as their experience, if any, with law enforcement. This interaction provides an invaluable perspective, discussions and learning moments between our first responders and those who have firsthand knowledge and personal experience with mental illness. Through education, CIT reinforces key principles that are practiced throughout the sheriff's office and that the ideal approach to any crisis is number one, it's always a compassionate response, number two is a de-escalation, and as we always hope for, a peaceful resolution. The training provided in CIT encourages our first responders when it's appropriate and safe to do so, to utilize their knowledge and skills from CIT to attempt to reach the peaceful resolution everyone wants. Our county dispatchers also receive CIT training through the dispatcher center and members of the public are able to request a CIT deputy respond to a crisis situation. This service is offered and is available in any language spoken to the members of the public. In these situations, the first available CIT trained deputy will respond. Through the collaboration between the sheriff's office and mental health professionals, doesn't end with CIT, the sheriff's office proudly pioneered a program called the Psychiatric Emergency Response Team, or the PERT team for short. PERT is specialized unit that began in two thousand and fifteen and is a collaboration between the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office and the San Mateo County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, also known as BHRS. At first, PERT prepared, uh, PERT paired one sheriff's detective with one old, one mental health clinician from BHRS. Due to the overwhelming success of the program, the unit recently doubled in size, now utilizing two sheriff's detectives and two mental health clinicians that are working out of our San Carlos Bureau. This team focuses on sheriff's office cases involving known or suspected mental health illness and PERT also serves as a resource for deputies in the field when they interact with members of the public who live with mental illness. PERT provides con- uh, um, consultations to deputies and assists them in finding applicable resources and resolutions to promote a peaceful outcome of any type of crisis. With those parameters, PERT conducts the outreach and provides education and strives to connect people to applicable services and ma- with the major goals being first and foremost, to reduce violent interactions and tragic outcomes involving law enforcement and those experiencing any type of crisis. To manage acute crisis, to reduce jail recidivism and those living with mental illness, to reduce emergency hospitalization for psychiatric evaluation by diverting people to other community services and resources. PERT provides a support of, to members of the public and their families that have never been offered by law enforcement in the greater Bay Area. The sheriff's office has proudly been the forefront of this much-needed service. The impact of PERT has been so positive, the sheriff's office receives numerous requests for guidance from other county and state police agencies who hoped to begin their programs and use ours as a model. PERT is all, is involved in many other outreach education and educational efforts throughout San Mateo County with the goal of providing an avenue of care for unlinked or underserved populations. PERT serves as the homeless liaison for the sheriff's office. In the capacity, PERT provides outreach to the mentally ill within the homeless community. PERT collaborates with the establishments, with the established homeless outreach teams to educate and offer resources to those who may need a little extra help. These members of society may not, they have no other avenues of assistance and are often only exposed to negative interactions with law enforcement. PERT is working to change that experience from here on out. PERT also responds to requests for community presentations, an effort to educate public about the resources and availability in this county. Now that almost one hundred percent of the sheriff's office patrol deputies are trained in CIT, the sheriff's office recognized the need for even more training. Working off a model established by the Portland Police Department, the sheriff's office has built a framework for an enhanced crisis intervention team. He, uh, which is enhanced crisis intervention team, also known as ECIT. ECIT deputies give, uh, given even more training in these areas of compassion and effective crisis response. These deputies will be assigned to patrol and funk and patrol function and work closely with PERT, furthering linking the sheriff's office and the mental health professionals. We plan on having a function EIT, uh, team out on the streets soon. The sheriff's office recognizes the need for constant progress in the areas of crisis and response and fully intends to continue moving forward in that direction. In closing, the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office pledges to promote public trust through fair and impartial policing and will treat all persons with dignity and compassion and respect. The sheriff's office will continue to demonstrate its commitment to protecting life and property and preserving the public peace by acting professionally, with integrity and with, without prejudice, even, even in the most challenging situations when no one is watching, both on and off duty. We have been entrusted by the leaders of San Carlos to protect and serve the community and it is our intent to do so every day. Thank you, and this concludes my presentation.
All right, uh, thank you, Chief. That was very thorough. Um, uh, let's see, uh, I don't see any hands raised, uh, from my colleagues. Uh, I do have one so far, uh, Mark.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, do you, do you, do you want me to ask my question or?
Yeah, well, um, yeah, go, go ahead. I do have, um, a person that wanted to speak that I will have speak when you are done with your comment. We'll go to that guest and then we'll come back to other council comments.
I, I'm happy to wait if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, why don't, why don't we take her? Um, Dana Johnson, if you can hear me, um, hopefully, uh, we can unmute you and you had a couple of comments you wanted to make about the Pride Day proclamation, I believe.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor Collins, for having me. Actually, I wanted to give a gratitude of thanks for the proclamation and we had something set up here, uh, that I wrote that I would like to share. Um, hi, my name is Dana Johnson. My pronouns are they, them, theirs. Identify as gender non-binary and I'm a co-chair of the San Mateo County LGBTQ Commission. On behalf of the LGBTQ Commission, I would like to thank Mayor Ron Collins, Vice Mayor Laura Farmer-Lohan, and the City of San Carlos Council members for the proclamation. I would also like to thank City of San Carlos for raising the pride flag on Friday, June fifth. The LGBTQ Commission mission is cultivating San Mateo County as a welcome and safe environment where its LGBTQ plus community members can thrive. The San Mateo County LGBTQ Commission is motivated by promoting justice and equity, ending oppression and current and historical inequities and ensuring that all voices in the community are represented. So we created this visibility project to show the LGBTQ plus community that they're supported, have freedom of expression, and there is visibility of the LGBTQ plus culture. The San Mateo County LGBTQ community is currently celebrating the eighth annual San Mateo County Pride Celebration, virtually. The celebration kicked off yesterday and will end with a grand finale on Saturday, June thirteenth. For more details and to register for workshops, check out our website, smcprioccelebration.com. The LGBTQ Commission has two commissioner positions open. The deadline to apply is Monday, June fifteenth. If you're interested in applying, please visit the LGBTQ Commission website, lgbtq.smcgov.org. Happy Pride. In solidarity, we stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dana. That was very well said and it was an honor to have you as our guest on Friday. Okay, um, we are gonna go back now to, uh, council questions of Chief Dury, uh, Mark Ober.
Thank you, Ma- Mayor Rock Collins. Um, thank you, Chief, for the report. Um, I, I would be interested in your comments and perspective on, uh, what I had mentioned in my comments earlier today, uh, which I, I hope you heard. Um, basically, reports that I've seen from quite a few people that, uh, frankly, they felt terribly intimidated by the appearance and rollout of, I believe it was the sheriff's deputies in the Mutual Aid Pact in San Mateo. Um, just be interested in your perspective on that.
Yes, uh, the sheriff's office did respond that night to San Mateo and that is our, uh, standard operating procedure in our outfit when we are responding on mobile field force. It was the sheriff's office and it was also other mo- other members from law enforcement agencies, uh, throughout the county uh, in, in force and, uh, that is our normal, um, where, when we respond to any type of protest or anything like that, where we think we, uh, might take, uh, any type of uh, rocks or bottles like we have in Oakland and in San Francisco, uh, the last couple of weeks where we stand on a line to guard an area and we have to stand there and we have to, um, unfortunately get hit by those rocks and bottles. And what, what they were wearing that night was they were wearing their helmets, their protective shields to cover their faces, their bulletproof vests, and they have their normal batons that are issued to them, um, and when they get hired. So that's our normal wear when we respond on a mobile field force.
Well, I appreciate, uh, the answer. Uh, uh, I, I will just mention in passing and it relates to what I'm gonna ask the council to agendize later. Um, I, I believe I understand the basis for that. However, I think in the context of that protest and in other protests that I could imagine happening in, in San Mateo County, uh, to be honest, uh, Chief, I think it's, it's rather, uh, uh, out of line, uh, rather excessive.
May, may, may I comment on that?
Not until I'm finished, please.
Okay.
Um, the, uh, uh, again, I understand the, the rationale for it, but I think that to me is exactly one of the reasons why we need to have a discussion as a society as to how we want law enforcement to operate. Um, I, I admire the work that you and your, your colleagues do. Uh, you do a great job of protecting us. I wanna make sure that that continues to happen, but I also wanna make sure that, uh, normal citizens out exercising their constitutional rights don't feel scared to death, um, by, uh, you know, the appearance of the police.
Uh, go ahead, Chief.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yes, uh, in a mobile field force, when we get called, uh, that's our normal wear, but uh, most of the time we get called to a protest like in the city and when it's not a mobile field force type of response, we just have our normal, uh, uh, patrol where that we wear our uniform or bulletproof vest and such. So that's just in a mobile field force mutual aid type of response.
Uh, I appreciate the clarification that, however, the fact that there is an alternative suggests to me that uh, that perhaps the policies and protocols about which alternative gets picked under which circumstances, uh, need to be revisited. But that's a topic for a later discussion by the council if it's interesting. Thank you.
All right, uh, thank you, Mark. Thank you, Chief. Uh, very good presentation. Um, I think, uh, we are gonna move on now to item eight B unless there are any other council members that have some questions for the chief. I don't see any hands raised, so at this point, um, I believe, uh, Martin Romo is gonna take on the, uh, update for the tenant assistance program.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Uh, Martin Romo, Economic Development and Housing Manager. Uh, this evening, I'd like to provide you with an update on the city's tenant assistance program. Uh, the tenant assistance program was established via resolution at the April thirteenth council meeting to help support households that are facing economic difficulties as a result of the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic. Um, at that same meeting, Samaritan House, uh, was designated as the program administrator and has been working with the community to disperse funds to qualifying households. The program is structured to provide qualifying households a rent payment grant of up to five thousand dollars. Um, in order to qualify, a household must earn, must earn less than a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. Uh, just as an example, for a household of four persons, uh, the cap would be set at two hundred and eight thousand dollars. Um, so any household below that limit would qualify for this program. Council funded the program with one hundred thousand dollars in grant funding, um, plus some additional funds for administrative costs from the city's housing fund. As of this past Friday, June fifth, a total of twenty-two applications have been submitted. Uh, seven households have been awarded grants and there are fifteen additional households that have requested grants and whose applications are currently under review. Uh, of the, of the total amount, uh, that's been, uh, funded for this program, twenty thousand dollars has been dispersed and the eighty thousand dollars that remain, um, may be dispersed to the fifteen households that are currently, uh, waiting to be approved for the program. There is no cutoff date for the program at this time and members of the community may apply at any time. We are continuing to advertise the program and will continue to work with Samaritan House to disperse the remaining funds. Any households that are interested in applying for assistance may do so online at SamaritanHouseSanMateo.org. And additionally, if there are any questions about this particular program or any other housing-related concerns, the community can certainly, um, contact the housing division by emailing us at housing@cityofsancarlos.org. So with that, I'm available for any questions that you may have.
All right, uh, thank you, Martin. Um, Adam, questions?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. Martin, thanks for the presentation. That's helpful. I'm glad to hear that, um, you know, we've got a number of families that are, you know, applying, and not glad to hear that they're applying, but glad that they're applying to, to get some of this support and aid from the city and so, um, do you know, can you tell me like, um, the seven, was, were they, did they come in earlier and then the fifteen came in later? I'm just curious on timing, whether we're, we're seeing those kind of applications still come in or things have sort of settled down, if you have any sort of thoughts around that.
Yes, I understand, um, the seven came in on the earlier side of things and, um, there was a online application that became available about two and a half weeks ago and so I think we saw a bit of an uptick um, in the applications at that time. Um, so that, I think that might have helped a bit and to just give you a little bit more detail on the seven that applied that, um, has been able to serve eighteen individuals. Um, and it, the average grant amount was for about twenty-eight hundred dollars per household.
Great. And do you know, I mean, are, are other communities doing this? Have you, do you have any sense from Samaritan House, kind of like what the response has been in other communities or, or sort of we sort of in a similar situation or, or not?
Uh, other communities are also doing similar programs, but we haven't received updates, um, on the numbers from of the other communities, um, on what their performance has been in terms of, you know, how, what percentage of their funding has been used, um, or how many households they've served. how, what percentage of their funding has been used, um, or how many households they've served. Um, just because I think it's an ongoing program, and, um, you know, they're still kind of processing and, and working through the applications. They haven't been able to put out some of like the results or summaries of, of how the program has been, um, continuing, although they were able to put that together for us for our particular presentation this evening.
Great. Thanks for the update.
Uh, Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me lower my hand here. Uh, Martin, I apologize if I, uh, missed this, uh, in your presentation, which was as usual excellent. Um, uh, you know, the council had, uh, we've earmarked various funds to help, uh, people in need with rental assistance and whatnot over the, you know, recently. Um, do you have an update on, uh, on how we stand on that? How, how the funds are doing? I mean, are you, are the, is Samaritan House running out of money, or, or what?
Um, I'm sorry, in, in, I mean, in terms of the, the other funding that we provide to nonprofits such as Samaritan House outside of this particular program? Is that the question?
Yes.
Yes, so we do provide them, um, a, uh, the way it works is through a notice of funding availability, where the city puts out a certain amount, um, of funding that is allocated this year. I believe it was about $115,000 in, in general funds for housing in particular. Um, and the city manager's office also has another nonprofit grant program that I think Samaritan House may also apply to. But for housing funds, um, I believe we did give Samaritan House, um, I think somewhere around the 20,000, um, mark that they requested, and they are using those funds. And this is something that they apply for on an annual basis. Um, and at the end of the year, we receive invoices for how those funds were used. Um, so it's difficult to track, um, before we receive those invoices at the end of the year, how they're being used, and whether they, you know, the, the the funds that they needed for a particular program, um, has been fully committed. Um, but they do apply on, on a continual basis, year over year, um, to our different NOFAs, and, um, they have always exhausted the funds that the city has granted them. So I suspect that by, at the end of, um, some period in the near future, um, the funds that we have remaining, which is about $80,000 in this particular program, um, the tenant assistance program, will, will also be, um, exhausted at some point.
Yeah, I guess, I guess maybe I should have phrased my question a little differently. I appreciate the answer that you gave me, but wha- what I'm interested in is because of the magnitude of the current crisis and sort of the immediacy of the current crisis, and we allocated, as you mentioned, $115,000, I thought it was, to directly Samaritan House for their program. Um, I would really appreciate it if staff could provide us, uh, either in writing or in a presentation, either what, whatever works best, uh, an update on how that money is, is going, and to what extent it's, it's, uh, potentially in risk of being exhausted while the need may still be there. Um, because, you know, it's, it's, it's not as if we couldn't, i- if the council decided to allocate additional funds to it, but we need to know that it's running out to do that.
Got it. Uh, just to, uh, thank you for clarifying, Councilmember Olbert. Um, so of the $100,000 that we did awarding grant funding, we have, um, dispersed 20,000, and there's 80,000 that remains, uh, of which there's 15 households that are requesting grants. So if all 15 households were given the maximum $5,000 grant, we'd have about $5,000 left. Um, but we'd have to kind of, uh, go through and make sure that these households, uh, get qualified and see what request for their rental, uh, what rent they are requesting be paid, or to understand what the, uh, what the amount remaining is. Uh, but we can certainly continue to update you at subsequent meetings, perhaps through, um, through writing as to what that, what the status of those remaining funds are for this particular program.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right, next is, uh, Sam.
Thank you, Mayor. Martin, great presentation. Thank you for the update. I have two quick questions for you. Um, the first is, you mentioned that the average amount that recipients are, um, being awarded is about $2,800 per household. Is that, um, are they, is Samaritan House is the goal to cover one month's rent? And then, um, is that, is that where the $2,800 is coming from versus receiving the full amount of 5,000?
That's right. So, um, a household that approaches Samaritan House with, uh, within with a request for a rent grant, um, will get there, if they qualify for the program, will get their, um, rent payment for a, a given month, and they are eligible to apply again up to the $5,000 maximum amount.
Okay, so they would apply a second time to receive the second month's, uh, rent?
That's right.
And then my second question, do you know what the turnaround time is for, um, making it through the process, since we are paying administrative fees to Samaritan House? I'm just curious if it's a week, or two weeks, or several weeks? What is their process like with timing?
It's taken, it's, it seems to have taken about, about two weeks to turn around an application from when we, from when they receive an application to when the grant goes, goes out, but I think it's, uh, i- it's really dependent, from what I understand, from Samaritan Houses, depending on how quickly they can receive the necessary documentation. Um, you know, the sooner they can collect all the necessary documents, the faster they can process it and then issue the, the, the grant.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
All right, uh, thanks, Sarah. Martin, I just have, uh, one question, and I apologize. I'm, I'm sure you answered it, but I had juggling a lot of things tonight. I'm not sure I heard the answer, but how many San Carlos families have requested rental assistance?
22 applications in total to date.
22. Okay, great. All right, thank you. Uh, great presentation. I don't see any other hands raised. Um, so let us move on now, um, to a public hearing. Before I do, I just wanna check in with, uh, Crystal and find out if we have any other, uh, public comment, uh, any other speakers that
No one else.
This one?
No one, no one has called in.
Okay, all right. We're gonna move on now to a public hearing. This is night, item 9A. This is consideration of the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision approving the 1626 to 1648 Walnut Street development. And I think we're gonna start with, uh, Lisa Costa-Sanders. Is that correct?
Thank you. Good easi- good evening. Lisa Costa-Sanders, Principal Planner. I'll be reviewing, um, the item before you this evening, which is the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to approve the development at 626 Walnut Street. Yeah, there we got it. All right, the subject site, um, currently includes three lots totaling just over 26,000 square feet. There's two existing commercial buildings and one eight-unit residential building on the site. It's surrounded by four-story residential and mixed-use buildings, and the current zoning is mixed-use downtown, which allows up to 50 units per acre. Planning Commission at its April 20th meeting voted, um, 5-0 to approve the design review to allow for the new five-story mixed-use building, a tentative parcel map for the condominium units, a below-market-rate housing plan to provide, uh, affordable units on-site, and a transportation demand management plan to reduce the project generated by 20%, as well as a use permit for unbundled parking. The project itself includes a five-story mixed-use development with a 62-foot height to the roofline. It includes 35 condominium units with four affordable units, as well as, uh, 2,300 square feet of ground-floor commercial space that's provided into, um, tenant spaces. And then there's onsite parking of 45 parking spaces, and 62 bicycle spaces will be provided on-site. And the applicant qualified for, uh, the state density bonus provisions. Just wanna walk you through, excuse me, the below-market-rate housing plan and state density bonus briefly. Um, as I indicated, four units are provided on-site. That includes three, three-bedroom low-income units and one four-bedroom moderate-income unit. And those are required to be affordable for a term of 45 years. As such, the project is entitled to the state density bonus. That gives the development an additional seven units for a total of 35 units on-site. They've also requested a waiver from the building height, floor area requirements, and a concession to reduce on-site parking. The density bonus provisions are by right with no further review authority by the city. I just wanted to show you the design. This is a view, um, that's looking on Walnut Street. You would be looking towards San Carlos Avenue. And you see here, their design is two identical buildings. There's a break in the middle that provides for a central landscape courtyard. Um, and there's a lot of differentiating, um, use of building materials, as well as articulation with the balconies and the window pattern. And then you see here the ground-floor retail space, and the parking garage is divided into two um, separate garages with two separate entrances. And this is a bit of a bird's eye perspective, perspective, showing the five-story development and the surrounding existing four-story buildings, and we're right across the street, um, from Wheeler Plaza Development. An appeal of the Planning Commission decision was filed by Terrence Wang, representing the residences at 618 Walnut Street. And I'll walk through the points of the appeal. Um, so the first point of the appeal is that the, the new development will completely block the sunlight and make some of the units at 618 Walnut Street in the dark. They also indicated that according to state density bonus, waivers shall not adversely impact the public. They feel that design has a negative impact. Um, staff agrees that it's true that a portion of the new building of 626 Walnut Street will be built to the property line, and the amount of light to the south-facing elevation of 618 Walnut Street will be reduced. Based on the building code analysis, it was concluded that there will be sufficient light and ventilation for the 618 Walnut Street building with the new development at 626 Walnut. The waivers under state density bonus law are for an increase in the building height, floor area, and a reduction in parking. No waiver was granted for the zero setback, which is allowed in the zoning code. Therefore, there is no impact from the granting of the state density bonus on the adjacent building. The other reason for the appeal, they feel that the new development at 626 Walnut Street will jeopardize the safety of many people living at 618 Walnut Street, as it completely blocks their way of egress. It also increases the risk of breaking in and fire spread, as well as privacy leakage. Um, both buildings are equipped with fire, um, excuse me, based on the requirements of the Uniform Building Code and Fire Codes, emergency escape and rescue openings are required to be located on the same lot on which the building is situated. Use of the adjoining property for emergency escape is not permitted. Therefore, construction of the 626 Walnut Street building does not have an adverse impact on the existing 618 Walnut Street building. Both buildings are equipped with fire sprinklers, which mitigates the risk of fire spread. The windows at the new 626 Walnut Street building are offset from 618 Walnut Street, as well as inward-facing with a courtyard, um, and light wells, and they will not impact the privacy. The walls containing windows on each side of the building are 20 feet apart from each other, and I'll show that in a moment with another graphic. Sorry. Okay, there we go. Sorry about that. Um, finally, they request the city council reconsider the development and protect the public health and safety for the current residences of 618 Walnut Street, and the developer reconfigure the design of the 626 Walnut Street building. The Planning Commission approved the design of 626 Walnut Street after thorough consideration of two separate public hearings. The new building complies with building and fire codes, as well as the city's municipal code setbacks. With the provision of affordable housing, the development qualifies for the state density bonus provisions for the additional height and floor area. The project does not include any variances from the city's development regulations. So this is a section view of the existing 618 Walnut Street building. And this would be a view if you were standing at the back of the property and you were looking forward towards Walnut Street. So the new 626 Walnut Street building would be on the right side of this graphic. Um, as you can see here, there's below-grade parking level, a first-floor parking, as well as a second-floor office, and those are all built right to the east-side property line. The third floor and fourth floor contains the residential condominium units, and the exterior wall of these units is set back 10 feet from that side shared property line with 626 Walnut. The units do include exterior balconies that are set back five feet from the shared property line. And then on the third floor, there is some storage closets that are built out to the shared property line. This is a pretty busy graphic, but I'll walk through it for you and happy to answer any questions later. So this is the third floor plan, and on your left is the 626 Walnut Street floor plan. On the right is the 618 Walnut Streets. This shaded area would be 618 Walnut. So you see here, I'll start at the top. Um, the red dash line that goes through is the property line. The solid blue line on the shaded part of the building at 618 Walnut Street is where the walls and the windows of the residential units are, and I indicated that's 10 feet from the property line. As you work your way down, you'll see their covered balconies set out five feet from the property line, and then they have an open balcony area that goes to the property line, as well as, um, storage closet built to the property line. And then if you see this, um, light shaded area, those are light wells. So the, the pattern is, here's the units. There's the, um, open balcony, light well, balcony, um, storage closets, balcony, light well, balcony, storage closet, balcony, and then it's open beyond. Um, walking through the side of 626 Walnut Street, starting at the rear here, you see there's the unit right here that is built to the property line, the shared property line, at a width of 26 feet, four inches, and there's no windows on that shared property line. Um, then there's a light well that's opposite this light well to let the light into the living room windows. And that light well is 10 feet deep by 30 feet long. So the resulting here is 20 feet between this wall and that wall, so, and the windows are offset. So there's a window at this location, and then windows for this unit faces inward, as well as this unit faces inward with windows. Again, this other unit then, 26 feet, four inches, built to that shared property line. Moving on to the fourth floor, the fourth floor at 618 balconies is set back a bit more than the third floor. So those are five feet from that property line, and they also have some small storage closets. And again, 10 feet for the wall of the units and their windows. And then this is a similar pattern as the third floor at 626, where these, this unit is built to the property line at a width of 26 feet, and then the light well, 10 by 30 feet, and then the other unit. And again, no windows on that property line. Um, and then this just shows you the elevation of the 626 Walnut Building that would be facing, uh, 618 Walnut. And these are the areas that set back 10 feet from the property line, wherever you see a window. And as well as this area here, set back, um, 10 feet and actually a little bit more at some locations from that, uh, shared property line. Uh, the finished material is a smooth white plaster, and, um, as I indicated, the windows here are also designed to be offset from the living room windows at 618 Walnut Street. The, um, new development at 626 Walnut Street does comply with the setback requirements. There's no variances or exceptions. And as I indicated, the use of an adjoining property is not permitted by the building code for compliance with emergency escape and rescue requirements. And 626 Walnut Street does not impact the light and ventilation for code requirements for the existing 618 Walnut Street. Uh, the public notice was mailed to property owners for this hearing on May 28th, as well as published in the newspaper, and staff has not received any comments, um, as of the preparation of this report. Um, that concludes staff's presentation. City Attorney Greg Rubens will help facilitate council questions. Um, the applicant, appellate will give a presentation, and the developers also here this evening to respond to questions. Thank you.
Okay, um, c- council members, I think the next step in the process is to hear, um, from the appellate. Uh, and then we, um, and I understand that, that the developer of the project is here, and then we can answer any questions, um, from, and we have, uh, staff members here, including from the fire department, uh, my office and, and planning.
Through the chair.
Yeah, uh, go ahead, Mark.
Thank you. Uh, Greg, um, for those of us who may have had conversations with people about this item since, uh, uh, before it became a, um, a- and this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, as I understand it. Wh- when should we disclose those? Is it before or after the applicant questions and answers and whatnot, or now?
Uh, you know, ex- excellent point, um, and I appreciate you bringing that up. I think it'd be good if, if any of the council members has, um, interacted with either the, uh, appellate or the applicant. interacted with either the appellate or the applicant, it'd be good to disclose it now before we start.
Then, Mr. Mayor, if I may briefly continue, as I was just implying, I have had several discussions and email exchanges, I believe they were several months ago when this item first came before the planning commission to, about this topic. And I did some research into, you know, to improve my understanding of the state density bonus rules, and I think I may have even written some articles about it. I do not believe that any of the things that I either participated in or did will, will have an effect on my ability to render a fair and impartial judgment tonight. Although, of course, if Greg or anybody else disagrees with that, I'm happy to entertain that or recuse myself or whatever I need to do. So is that sufficient, Greg, or?
Yes, yes, that is excellent.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Greg, I think Laura had a question.
Yeah, I just wanted to share that I had a very brief conversation with representative from the developer of six two six many months ago. It will not influence my ability to make a decision on this item.
Okay, so next, Greg, you said we're going to hear from Jane Tenny, is that correct?
The appellate or their representative.
Okay, I have Jane Tenny, but whoever is.
It's Jane Tenny.
Jane, welcome and go ahead.
Okay. Hello, city council members. My name is Jane Tenny, and I'm a teacher here in the San Carlos School District and an owner of a below-market unit. I'm here before you as a representative of the homeowners of the Walnut Building in Pacific hacienda at six eighteen Walnut Street. The proposed development by ViiV at six twenty-six Walnut Street raises a number of serious concerns that we were asking the city council to address. In order to give you a better understanding of the concerns I am raising on behalf of the residents of the Walnut Building, I will walk you through a few slides. If you could turn to the next slide. Okay. This is the diagram. On the left shows the new building proposed right beside our building dashed in red at six eighteen Walnut Street. Okay, and we're ready for the next slide. This rendering shows the height of the new building as well as the relationship between the proposed building and the existing buildings on its sides. You can clearly see the proposed five-story building is intentionally designed to build to the property line wall-to-wall with the neighboring buildings. And then the next slide, please. This is the back. This is a view from the backside. As you can see, there's only one side of the residence. This is the only side the residents of the Walnut Building have for their access to light, air, and egress. These are the units that are affected by the proposed building's wall-to-wall construction. Next slide, please.
Sorry, it keeps freezing up on me. I'm gonna have to have this view.
Okay. Terrence, my neighbor, visited the property of the proposed building to take photographs to further contextualize the proposed construction. These are some of the photos. The first photo is the currently existing side gate to the property. When you enter the gate, the second photo shows the alley as it currently stands. The Walnut Building wall marks the Pacific hacienda property line construction approved by this city, San Carlos. The proposed luxury housing plans call for building to their property line, creating a wall-to-wall situation. The third photo shows the units affected by this proposal. Pictured are units three oh seven and four oh seven above it as well as units three oh five and four oh five. Not pictured is another set of four units just to the right of this photo. In total, there are eight units that will be significantly negatively impacted by the currently proposed building construction. Please go to slide five. My, Terrence is here with me, and he's asking me to ask you if you could make it bigger so people can see his drawing. Let's see, are we on slide? Okay. This is the floor plan of the third, this is the floor plan on the third floor. The thick red line is the five-story building wall. These hatched areas on the deck spaces for units on the third floor in the six eighteen Walnut Building, decks are all the way to the property line, and half of the above space is covered by the fourth-floor decks. As you can clearly see, the proposed building light well is not going to help preserve natural light and air at all through the code analysis, although the code analysis report somehow shows it does. Units three oh seven, three oh three, and three oh two will almost completely be blocked by a gigantic wall. The other units would also severely and negatively be impacted by the proposed building. If the proposed building is constructed as planned, residents of the third floor will be able to touch the wall when we stand on our balcony. And Terrence has drawn a pattern of the sun. And when units three oh seven and three oh two, the deck will be a hundred percent facing the wall with only five-by-ten light well. Unit three oh three deck will be eighty percent facing the wall with only a five-by-ten light well. The sun also rises in the east while moving towards the south and sets in the west as shown below or shown there. And then, so as, the way as just as the sun moves through the sky, we will not have enough sunlight at all. We don't think it matches, we don't think it matches that we have sunlight. If you just look at our building to the way the sun sets through the sky, you said eighty percent, Terrence, of blockage of sun compared to what we have today, at least in my unit, three oh three worse for him in three oh seven. Can you please go to the next slide? Okay. So here on page six is a photo simulation of what our balconies will look like before and after the proposed construction is built as planned. As you can see, it is clear that light to our units will be severely restricted, almost none in the bedroom at all, actually none in the bedroom at all. It is clear that there will be no egress if there's a fire that prevents our escape to an internal stairwell. We will be trapped. Natural light, fresh air, and some view to the outside are very essential to our physical and mental health. I believe that we would all agree that as we are sheltering in place during this COVID crisis, that light, fresh air, and above all else, safety are essential in every home. I think it goes without saying, this project, as it is proposed today, is extremely undesirable for anybody. And especially those in the Walnut Building of the Pacific hacienda. Nobody dreams of a five-story wall being built that they're only access to light and air. So that's the end of our slides, but I do have a few positions to clarify. I familiarized you with the building, and now I want to outline what the Pacific, the residents of Pacific hacienda are appealing to development at six two six Walnut Street. One, the response by the applicant's code consultant raises the question whether egress from certain sleeping rooms at their own development at six two six Walnut Street is compliant with fire official access requirements. Bedroom windows that are supposed to egress to an exit court instead go down to a combination unoccupied stairwell, roof, and light well. This does not look like there's enough room for fire personnel to access with ladders that would enable egress from windows or that the roof would be considered acceptable as an exit court for units two oh two B, two oh four B, three oh two B, and three oh four B, two oh one A, and two oh four A, and three oh one A, and three oh four A. Has the developer met with fire marshal to go over these points on their building? In addition, in review of the staff's report on the analysis under the design review with conformance to development standards in the zoning section of the municipal code eighteen point oh five point oh three O C, when the site isn't adjacent to a residential district, the project must comply with whatever standard results in the greatest setback. Pacific hacienda at six eighteen Walnut Street is in a residential district with mixed-use zoning. Six eighteen Walnut has a greater setback than six two six Walnut, at least on the fourth floor, which has a five-foot setback. The zoning section of municipal code eighteen point oh five point oh three O has not been applied. Simply put, the city of San Carlos building code is not being enforced here. The fourth floor of the Walnut Building in the Pacific hacienda is set back five feet from the property line. The neighboring property, in this case, ViiV's development, should be set back at least five feet from the property line, starting at least at the fourth floor and above. The city of San Carlos agrees that there is an issue of fire egress at six eighteen Walnut Street. Residents of sixteen at Walnut Street brought up concerns of fire safety at nearly every community meeting with the planning commission and at every stage of this proposed development. Yet these issues remain unaddressed and unresolved. The facts show that the city of San Carlos approved the development at six eighteen Walnut Street. The city may have been derelict in its duty to protect the residents of San Carlos if they erroneously approved the Pacific hacienda development with disregard for fire safety codes. Because of this approval, the city of San Carlos and the fire department put residents in an unsafe situation. Today, through no fault of our own, we residents are left bearing the blame for critical safety failures unresolved in the past. Approval of the proposed ViiV development at six two six Walnut Street puts residents of six eighteen Walnut Street in serious jeopardy. We're not developers. We do not work for the city. We are hard-working individual homeowners. Most of the residents of six eighteen Walnut are not original owners. We did not have a voice twenty years ago when Pacific hacienda was being developed. What I imagine is the city of San Carlos, nor the Pacific hacienda developers, nor the fire department ever imagined a development such as ViiV at six two six Walnut Street in what was, at that time, a quaint downtown San Carlos. Residents of Pacific hacienda are largely senior citizens. They bought here to live comfortably in a home that meets the needs of aging bodies. In addition to safety issues, many of our residents are on a fixed income. Building a five, large five-story structure wall-to-wall with a structure that was never intended to be built wall-to-wall with a neighboring building opens a host of issues. There are questions about drainage between buildings, access to maintenance, potential damage to our building during the construction process, and resulting in failure of proper drainage systems between the two buildings. And the fear for expenses likely incurred through no fault of our own is a concern. The city of San Carlos reviewed, ordered adjustments, and ultimately approved the development of Pacific hacienda as it stands. The city of San Carlos took the responsibility to protect the health and safety of the residents of six eighteen Walnut Street. You're asking us as individual homeowners to pay for the sins committed twenty years ago by the city. We could possibly pay with our lives. Please keep the health and safety of the residents you serve in mind as you review this appeal. We are not asking that the development at six two six Walnut Street not happen. We are asking that it happens responsibly. Any development should consider the health and safety of the development's future residents as well as the health and safety of their current and future neighbors. The good news is, we do feel that there are solutions that we could all live with. We, as Pacific hacienda homeowners in the Walnut Building, wish to be good community citizens and neighbors. The developer has an opportunity to be a good neighbor and a good community builder as well. I feel the whole world is looking for kindness more than ever before, and ViiV has the opportunity before them now to make changes that follow city codes and are kind. They have large units in their project, and it's very tall, and they have room. ViiV could slightly reduce the size of their large units. Additionally, they have seventeen feet of space between the two buildings. They could reduce that to twelve to fourteen feet. This would provide more light to the residents and provide a defensible space in fire and keeping fire from spreading between two buildings. And it would also allow residents here at six eighteen to have proper lighting and airflow. It would also allow ViiV to build a profitable project with some concessions. I would ask the city council to request that ViiV revise the plans to address our concerns. ViiV has other projects in the works, a Cherry Street project that has been marred by continual problems. ViiV also owns the beloved Blackwater Land. Blackwater neighbors are concerned and carefully watching to see how ViiV develops other land in San Carlos. Residents are looking to see how ViiV responds to residents as a developer in San Carlos. It would greatly improve community relations if ViiV proved to be a prudent developer and considerate of neighbors. We are not asking for ViiV not to build on this land. We're not even asking them to reduce the five stories. What we're asking for, we understand development will be built there. But we ask you, the city council, to encourage, require ViiV to be thoughtful developer and to change their plans with our concerns in mind and also following the codes that exist to protect us. You have an opportunity before you to adjust this project where all parties' interests are carefully considered, and we thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you, Jane. I, who are we going to hear from next? Do we have another staff member that's gonna speak?
Mr. Mayor, the, I think the next in order that I prefer is the developer to be able to respond to the appeal. And then we have an opportunity to ask staff questions after we hear both presentations.
Okay, so we'll hear from Mr. Gibson, and then also from, back to staff, and then entertain question. Is that your recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gibson, are you available?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor Collins and council, for your time to review this project tonight. I'm Sean Gibson, representing the developer, ViiV. Lisa, thank you for your thorough overview and staff time for presenting this. Council, we submit an official response from our legal team that you should have in your packet. So I won't reread that, but I did want to provide some context in terms of the design to date, which is, we're going on over four years on the design and redesign of this. And over the years, we've worked in good faith with neighbors to revise the design to accommodate change requests, both within the constraints of the site, the existing neighboring building and code requirements, and the overall economics that make the project viable, including the onsite BMR units. So in that process, we have changed the design. We removed, I think Lisa touched on this, removed side-facing decks to reduce privacy issues. We removed many of the side-facing windows to further reduce privacy and sightline issues. We did set back portions of the building on the side lot line, which again, were not required by code. So we have been working in good faith to reduce the effect. Again, you know, we've said this, it's worth repeating, which is obviously privacy and light issues affect both neighbors, right? So we're working to, within the constraints, create the best design for all neighbors and future options. One of the things we do, we do have is the white finish along the lines, along that lot line. So hopefully that will help reflect some of that light onto the balconies and windows to help retain the light levels. Obviously, it will be impacted, but again, it's code compliant. We talked about the issue of safety and egress, and, you know, each building must perform that on its own, to the points by the appellant. Yes, we've been in thorough, multi-year discussions with fire and all other departmental review for this code compliant project, so we're confident that it provides for the safety for ours and look to six eighteen Walnut for providing for theirs separately. A keynote on this is, any design changes at this point would make the project economically unfeasible. So it would increase the consultant costs. It would extend the financing costs. It would reduce the net sellable space. And none of that is allowed under, well, the financial feasibility can't be impacted under state density bonus law. So again, it's been a long road to get here. We don't feel there's any merit in the appeal outlined in our letter. We think that, you know, the thirty-five family-sized homes with four below-market rate units downtown showcase building. We hope that you reject this and we can move on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Mayor. If there's any other public comment on the item, I think that would be the time for the other public comment, and then we could go with the staff response.
Crystal, do we have anybody who? Crystal, do we have anybody who wishes to speak, or would you like to put up the public comment screen?
Yes, we do have one person in the queue, but let me go ahead and put this screen up before I admit them in. Okay, caller with the phone number ending in 606. Thank you for calling into the San Carlos City Council meeting. You'll have approximately two minutes to address the council, and you'll hear a chime at the end of that two minutes to wrap up. If you'd like, please go ahead and state your name prior to beginning, and you are now...
What's the timeline?
Can you hear me? Hello?
Hello?
Yes, hi. Thank you for calling in.
Yes. I was just trying to see if I could speak for a moment on the Walnut Street appeal.
Yes, please proceed. Hello? Yes, we're ready for your public comment.
Okay.
Caller with the phone number ending. There you go.
My name is Steve. My question is, what is the timeline on the construction once it starts? I'm asking this due to the issue at 1501 Cherry Street that this developer has been working on now for almost five years, and the building is still not complete?
Was that your only question, caller?
That's correct. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So that's a fairly simple question. I'm just wondering, Mr. Gibson, are you there? Can you respond to that question?
I'm here, and yes, we're aware of the concerns around the schedule for Cherry. Cherry is a previous generation of our system, so this will be much faster. I don't have the specific schedule currently, but we can, it will be much quicker. So, just so, for those of you that aren't aware, ViiV has a panelized building system, so it's a new way of building. We create the bulk of the building in a factory in Union City, and then we'll bring it to site and put it together, assemble it there. We're on a second generation of our wall system, so it'll be much, much quicker.
Okay. Thank you. Crystal, do we have any other public speakers?
Oh, yes, we just have one more calling in right now.
Okay.
Good evening, caller, phone number ending in 364. Thank you for joining the San Carlos City Council meeting tonight. You'll have approximately two minutes to address the council, and you'll hear a chime at the end of that two minutes to wrap up your comments. If you could, please state your name prior to beginning, and you are now unmute.
Good evening, caller. Joining the San Carlos City Council meeting tonight. You'll have approximately two minutes to address the council, and you'll hear a chime at the end of that two minutes to wrap up your comments. If you could, please state your name prior to beginning, and you are now unmute.
Yes, good evening, Council. My name is Gary Walker. I am a member of the Pacific hacienda Board of Directors, and the comment I would like to add to the discussion is one for the City Council with regards to the future of San Carlos, and that is, will the City Council consider remaining a hometown environment, or will it become akin to residential developers from afar? And so I think Jane Tenny has provided an excellent presentation with regards to remaining in a hometown environment of San Carlos, so we've all known and loved for so many years, and thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Crystal, anybody else?
Yes, we do have one more calling in right now. Caller ending in 379. Thank you for joining us tonight. If you could, please lower the volume of the meeting video behind you. That'll avoid an echo. You'll have approximately two minutes to address the council, at which point you'll hear a chime to wrap up your comments, and you are now unmute, so you may begin.
All right. Thank you. Crystal, anybody else?
Yes, we do have one more calling in right now. Caller ending in 379. Thank you for joining us tonight. If you could, please lower the volume of the meeting video behind you. We'll go. You'll have approximately two minutes to address the council, and you'll hear a chime to wrap up your comments.
Yes, hi. My name is Karen Hunt, and I am an owner in the 618 Walnut Building. You know, I've got to say that, as I listened to the response of the developer, he didn't actually speak to any of the issues that we raised. He seemed to be trying to hit a big PR strike with the discussion of the below-market-rate units, as did, quite frankly, your Lisa Costa-Sanders. So, I have not heard the developer respond at all to our concerns, quite frankly, and nor did I hear Lisa Costa-Sanders seem to have heard any of the conversations that we've had with her where we raised these issues. She kind of sounds like a realtor herself. So, those are my comments, and I'm pretty disappointed by what's happened so far.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. Any other public speakers, Crystal?
No, I don't see any callers calling in right now.
Okay. All right. Now that we've had some public comment, who are we going to hear from next, Greg? Would that be Chris Valley or Mr. Gareth Harris?
At this stage, we can do one of two procedural things. We can close the public hearing, since there's no more public comment, and then you can go to staff questions to answer any questions you have, or you could go with questions and then move to close the public hearing.
All right. Well, unless anybody else has called in, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Okay. And we have a motion in a second. Crystal, do we need a roll call on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert? Sorry, you're mute.
Yes. Sorry, Crystal, yes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Palmer-Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. We've closed the public hearing. Next, at the moment, I don't have any questions from council members, so Greg, are there further comments or presentations that we are about to hear or that we need to hear?
Well, we might weep the staff. I may have... Excuse me. Sorry.
We know we're ready for that. I think people were waiting for you to get to them.
All right. Greg, I do have three council members so far that want to ask questions.
Okay.
All right. So let's start with Sarah.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start, I wanted to thank the appellant tonight for speaking and also for her service as a teacher in San Carlos. He had a slide that showed balconies, specifically Unit 307 and Unit 302, where it appears that perhaps the wall of 626 Walnut would come right up to the balcony, and I'd like to hear staff's response on how much of the balcony is actually covered. It seemed like in those two units, a significant amount would be covered.
That sounds like good Lisa Costa-Sanders question.
Yeah, it would be helpful, Crystal, if you can pull up the presentation again, and maybe we can go to the third-floor slide so I can show on the floor plan where balconies are in relation to the 626 Walnut Street building.
And this is the appellant's presentation?
No, staff's presentation.
Staff's, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Lisa, you have control, so you can go ahead and flip to the slide you need.
Sorry. Okay, so on this floor plan, this is the third floor that the appellant was referencing, and the bedrooms are opposite the balconies, and then the living rooms are opposite the light wells on their building. So this balcony right here, the balcony goes all the way to the property line, and then there's a covered portion that is five feet above, and that's the balcony for the fourth floor. So the first five feet is covered here, and then the next five feet is open. So for this balcony, you can see it's open to the light well on this side. You can see the cursor, right?
Yeah. Yes.
It's open to the balcony here, so they'll get light in on this side, but it is correct that this wall will be built right up to the edge of the balcony, so right here. And then they have the storage closets that are on their property built out to the property line. And then this balcony here, there's a small portion that's built to the property line, and then this entire portion here is all open to the light well. And also here, this small portion here is open to the light well and this end, but then this section right here is built to the property line, again, storage closets, and then this portion here is built to the property line, but this end would be open to the light. And I can show you the fourth floor real quick if you'd like. So you see, oh, sorry, this is very sensitive. Okay. So here, this is the fourth floor where I told you that the balcony on the fourth floor comes out five feet, so there's a portion of the third balconies that's covered, and then a portion here that's open. So this portion here would be open to the light above, and then here's the light well, and then this is also open to light above, that five feet there. So this entire area is clear to the sky. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you, Lisa. I just, I kind of, I wish that the third floor looked a little more like the fourth floor, or that there was some, I think that having a wall right up to most of your balcony is a pretty significant change in the quality of life for those two residents in 307 and 302. Did that issue come up in the Planning Commission?
The Planning Commission did spend a fair amount of time talking about the design and talking about the setback, and I think what they appreciated was how the building does have the light wells kind of opposite in this area, so that creates a nice area for light and ventilation, how the windows here are facing inward, and how these windows are offset from those windows. So they appreciated that. Planning Commissioners did note that, you know, it is right to the property line, which is by code, this property owner has the right to do, as the 618 building, part of that is also built to property line. So they did acknowledge it's unfortunate, but it is what's permitted by the code, and there were no exceptions being requested by the applicant.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa. I'll yield my time for questions from my colleagues.
Adam?
Okay, thank you. Takes me a second to unmute, lower my hand. So I had just three questions right now, and then, so can you tell me, Lisa, or where are the fire exits on the 626 and sort of the ViiV project? Where are those located?
Lisa, if you can handle that, that'd be great, but if you'd refer to the Fire Department.
Whoever's appropriate to answer that. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, Lisa.
Yeah, no, I think it's more appropriate for building or fire to answer that question. Thank you.
Have a representative from Fire?
Yeah, hi, this is Gareth, Fire Marshal. Everybody hearing me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Perhaps I can answer that question. On 626, their exiting system is internal to the building, and you can see on the diagrams the stairs that go down that are available from each of the different units. There's multiple stairwells in each building for the folks in 626 to be able to get out of the building in the event there's an emergency. One of the things that has been repeatedly brought up is the issue of being able to get people out of windows on 626, and due to the fact that that building is proposed to be built to a fire-resistant construction and have a high-density commercial sprinkler system in it, there is no code requirement to be able to, because right now, depending on the type of construction of the building, the type of construction they're building into is fire-resistant, which means that there is no requirement for rescue and escape windows on 626. And so that's why they're able to have their egress be entirely internal, and the entire building is built to a very high level of fire-resistant construction. And so therefore, the code has exceptions to the requirements.
And thank you.
And that's why their exiting system is internal, and that's allowed under code.
Gareth, thank you for explaining that. Can you just clarify, is that by state building code, or is that within our own, just, have we adopted state building code, or is that something unique to San Carlos?
That is part of the state building code, and that is not an amendment or anything that was done by the city. That was a section of the code adopted by the Building Standards Commission, and during our ordinance, we simply accepted it into our municipal code. So it is not a specific, unique requirement to San Carlos. It's part of the base code adopted by the state.
Okay. Thank you. My next question is around the state density bonus. So can Greg, maybe you could walk through, because I understand if there's, they originally had 28 units proposed, and they proposed four below-market units. That doesn't, unless my math is completely wrong, that doesn't get us to, that does even hit 15%. So how do you get the state, how do you get the bonus if you're not even putting in 15% of units? That's what I want to... And we've changed some of our requirements, and so I'd like to understand how that all works together.
And I'll give an overview, and then Lisa Costa-Sanders can fill in the blanks. My, this came up previously at the Planning Commission, as I recall, and the density bonus is calculated from the initial entitlement under the zoning code, not taking into account the density bonus. So the four units are calculated based upon the number before the seven density bonus units that they're entitled to. So, and Lisa, you can maybe help me walk through the math, but that's my recollection of how the density bonus or the BMR units are calculated, not taking into account the density bonus units. And I think under the law, it's an incentive to build more units, so I think that's the intent of the law.
I get that, Greg. I think that, but my, and I think the law is flawed the way it's written, but my understanding with four units out of 28 is still not 15%. So that's what I, unless I've done my math completely wrong, that's where I want to understand how that qualifies for a state density bonus. I have like 14%.
I think it's a rounding issue, but Lisa, you could address that, please?
Yeah, so it rounds down for the city's 15%, so it's 4.2, so they need to provide four units, and for the 0.2, they pay the below-market-rate fee for any fraction of a unit. So the city's requirement is four units based on that 28-unit development.
And the state density bonus is regardless of what our standards may be for requiring below-market units in a development?
Correct. Many jurisdictions do not even have below-market-rate housing requirements, and so the state has established their own sliding scale based on the percent of below-market-rate units and based on the level of income. And so a very low-income unit, you don't... And so a very low-income unit, you don't need to provide as many as, say, a low-income unit to qualify for that percent. And you know, the city doesn't then keep recalculating the 15% below-market rate unit because we keep chasing ourselves. You know, if we required one more low-income unit, then they'd get another density bonus unit.
Right.
And stay more specific in that.
And the density bonus, the way the bonus is given, the bonus is basically sort of a bonus to build extra units, but you don't have to build any additional BMR units as part of that. It truly is sort of, here's a bonus to you.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. And then my last question is, so there's three properties there together. How does that work that they can build across three properties? Because I'm guessing if I bought the property next to me, I couldn't, the city wouldn't let me put those together.
For this site, they are through the condominium map, they're going to be merging the three properties and then re-subdividing with the condo map. So they are able to combine the properties into one developable site.
But we have to let them, we have to permit the condos to make that happen, is that right?
No, it could be a simple lot-line adjustment. If they were doing an apartment building, they could simply merge the lots, and the, the city would allow that typically.
And, and in these, with this unit, this particular property is like, you, you are, because it's multi-use and housed zone, you can build to the property line.
That's correct.
So that's why they can build, technically, they can build an open space for having to put walls in between each, each property line.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for now.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Laura?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. And I want to thank those who came tonight, Jane Tenny for presenting your case, as well as Sean from ViiV, as well as the city sharing your perspective. So a couple of questions, kind of building on the theme of this wall-to-wall construction, is, do we, I, I know of other cities where there's examples of this. So do we have other examples of this in San Carlos? In addition, is this design element where you build a wall right next to a balcony typical? Or under what circumstances does that happen, besides this particular one? I'm just trying to understand kind of where we are right now. And I'm not quite sure who would take that, maybe Lisa or Al Savae.
Might be Lisa, I hope, or Chris.
I can start and then maybe Al can jump in. I, I know we do have developments in town that do have that zero setback and multiple development. An example doesn't come to mind right now, though, about it coming right up to a balcony and that design, you know, interacting as such. But maybe if Al has anything to add.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. It's really on a case-by-case basis, and there are examples where buildings are built right to the property line and there's no openings. In these cases, it's very difficult, and we've seen this on multiple occasions actually in town. There's another project on Walnut that happened a couple of years ago where it was very similar situation where most of the build, most of the existing apartment building had windows facing the building. And in this case, it was discussed at the planning commission, and as Lisa noted, there were some adjustments that were made to that side of the building to accommodate some light and air into that, into the balconies and to protect the privacy of the existing apartment building. But this is a very common, and it's very difficult because these are smaller sites and it's an infill, infill development. And so all of these projects are very complex and challenging to do, and they're never perfect. And when you move walls around it, in terms of the, of the development project itself, it does impact square footage and viability of spaces and buildings and things like that. So at the commission, they did, they did talk about this a great deal, and they felt that the solution that was put forth was acceptable in in this complex situation where you have an existing apartment building. And where you could completely wall off one whole side of the building. And they, and they tried to come up with these solutions where that didn't happen.
Was, was there any discussion about, I appreciate, Sean, you talked about the fact that there's, the facing is going to be white and provide some reflective light. Was there any discussion of any type of landscaping or whatnot to provide some natural elements to soften the edges of, of this project?
Is that something that the planning commission considered, Lisa or Al?
There just isn't, there would be no room for landscaping at that zero-foot setback. And I don't believe that light well on the 626 Walnut side is accessible for landscaping. So I'm not sure how that would be accommodated on the 626 Walnut side of the building.
Okay, thank you. And then the appellant brought up a, a number of times the risk of fire, danger and risk for the tenants of 618. I'm wondering if Fire Marshal Gareth could talk to us about that aspect. So you gave a very cogent and clear explanation of the safety profile of 626. Could you talk to us about the appellant's concerns with respect to fire safety in the 618 building?
Vice Mayor, I just want to, before Gareth answers the question, because he's the fire expert, I'm just going to refer you to the, the opinion that's in the staff report about the, the fire access issue. And the, and, and just kind of generally point to the fact that this is an appeal of the approval of 626 Walnut. It's not really an inquiry into the code compliance of 618 Walnut. That is something that we haven't, we've done some preliminary review, and I, and I think the Fire Marshal has, has looked at some of those issues, and so did the consultants. The consultant, I think, assumed certain facts in, in there because they didn't, they weren't tasked with doing a, a complete review of the city's records. But we, we would want to do a complete investigation of the 618 and determine, one, if it is not in compliance, number one, and number two, what would be the way to bring it into compliance if that turns out to be the case? So with that, I will pass it off to our Fire Marshal.
Well, very well said, Greg. You know, really is, this was a project that was built long before I worked here, so I'm not that familiar with it. But that is a fully sprinkled building with a fire alarm system and code-compliant exiting. We're talking about 618. So it is very important to ensure that all of their life safety systems are well-maintained, which we do that as part of our annual inspections of the building. We ensure that everything is, is in service and up to current codes when it comes to their maintenance at 618.
Great, thank you.
But we still, I mean, we still have some work to do to do research and go back to the original project plans and any project conditions and everything related to it, which we do, we haven't been able to do yet.
I've got a quick question for either you, Gareth, or Greg. Does the investigation you're planning on doing of 618 affect the, this project in, in its approval or its timeline or anything that, or is that just a separate, a separate action you're going to take?
I think I'll take that, Gareth. That is a, it's a, it's a separate action because what's before you tonight's the appeal of 626 Walnut and the approval and, and what, you know, as, as has been laid out in the consultant's report and staff report and presentation. The fire code does not allow a, you to impose a condition on this project in order to provide fire code compliance for a project that, for the adjacent property that was built under a completely different fire code. And it's, as I understand, it's the 1997 fire code. And that's why we need to do, look at that to assist the build of 618 to, to come into compliance. Because now that it's been brought to our attention, through this process, we want to make an inquiry to see what happened. And to, to find out if it isn't in compliance or not in compliance, and if it's not, work with the, the homeowners association and the owners there to develop a plan to bring it into compliance of that, of that code when it was built.
Thank you. Let's move on. Adam, you had raised your hand, but we haven't heard from Mark yet, so I'm going to go to Mark and I'll come back to you.
Sure, that sounds great.
Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor Collins. I think my question is for, for Lisa, but it may be Lisa and Greg or Greg. I, I have to confess, as I'm sort of listening to all of this and having gone through all the materials from the planning commission and the staff report, I, I'm getting a little lost and confused as to what flexibility we have under the state density bonus regulations to, to contemplate granting anything or any of the things that are proposed. So it would help me if, if staff could clarify kind of what the, the area of flexibility is, for lack of a better term. Does that make sense?
I think that's probably a Lisa question on the.
I was hoping it was a Greg question. Yes, it is. You're correct. I think the reason you're having difficulty is that it's very limited. We don't have much discretion relating to state density bonus law, and the state did that, you know, purposely. I was just trying to go back to the, the original staff report to see, we, we did consult with the city, hired an outside attorney to, to give us some advice in this area because it is a specialty and the, the law has changed several times over the years. So we talked to them about what discretion do we have, what areas are we able to, you know, modify the project, and it's extremely limited. And based on what they're asking for, right? They're asking for the height, the floor area, and the parking. They're not asking for a setback exception. And so it's important to kind of connect those items as to what's being requested under state density bonus law and, and what concessions are being granted by the city.
And I'll just add, the economic feasibility issue is, is important in, in the density bonus law that was brought up by the applicant. And I think it ties to this project, and this is a hypothetical, it's not, it's not really, you know, what's being proposed. But because they asked for a height exception, if the footprint of the building was smaller and it became unfeasible with a smaller footprint because of a redesign, they might ask for more height. And there's not a, there's not a limit on height for the density bonus. And it's kind of outside our discretion. So the, what, what comes about it as part of that is that these buildings kind of, because of the concessions asked for and in our zoning code, we, we, the staff worked with the applicant to develop a project that fit in with, with our zoning code and that the, that the concessions and the waivers weren't so extreme that it would make the building out of place in the, in, in the location that it sits. That was part of the process.
I see. Okay, well, thank you both for that. So let me just, not so much recap, but just ask a final clarifying question about that. So I presume therefore that the risk to the city, if we were to try, there is a risk to the city if we were to try and grant or find a way to grant some of these things that are being requested, that we would be successfully sued or potentially could be successfully sued. Or I, I know, Greg, you don't like, and I shouldn't be asking you the, with the successful part, but let me just say that your question is, how likely is it that we could be sued?
Well, I, those are always tough questions, but that there, there are lots of times when, when developers decide to sue cities, and it is possible, developers do sometimes sue cities, and, and sometimes so do interested parties who are, are affected by the decision that the council makes and on an appeal like this. So the, the appeal process is part of exhausting administrative remedies for an appellant. They, they have to go through this process and the council has to consider it. The council's the final say on a project. And there's a time limit that applies when, after your final approval, excuse me. And let me, sorry, I have to interrupt this just for a second.
Sure.
One of the joys of being home, doing, doing a meeting. And so, so that the appeal, that this process is part of the process before someone could sue the city, is the point I'm trying to make. So, and a time limit applies after your decision is final on, on this appeal, whatever that decision is. So, yeah, there is, there's always a risk of litigation, but I think it's up to the, the parties who might be considering litigation to determine whether, what their chances of success are on, on such a, on such litigation.
Okay. May I ask, and Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to ask, following on here, but is there, it almost feels to me, given the, the potential legal aspect or litigation aspect to this, could we not have had a closed session to talk about the assessment of risks of various litigation or?
You know, there, there's been some recent case law about that limit our ability to goes, go into closed session unless there is an actual threat of litigation. I was in the abstract saying that we have to go through this process before someone could sue us, but that we don't have a threat of litigation at this time.
Fair point. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Lisa and Greg.
Thank you, Mark. Before we move on, I did have a request from Ms. Tenny to speak again, so can you hear me, Jane?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to remind you that the public hearing has been closed. After the public hearing's been closed, there's not an opportunity for the public to continue to rebut or argue the point. But if there's a question that any council member has of Ms. Tenny, they can ask that question and get a, if they need more information to make a decision and then obtain a brief response from Ms. Tenny.
So if we wanted to hear from her, it would, someone would have to make a motion to reopen the public hearing?
Well, that's one option that you have.
Okay.
But then you, we would have to allow anybody else who wanted to speak. It can't just be for Ms. Tenny. You're reopening the public hearing.
Okay, I understand. Well, then I'm going to leave that up to the rest of the councils to whether or not they want to reopen the public hearing in order to hear from Ms. Tenny.
Mr. Mayor, through the, or through the chair, I, I personally, I have, you know, more information's always better. I leave it to you to manage our time. But I'm certainly willing to hear from, I presume it'd probably be from both parties, so I'm willing to see the public hearing reopened.
All right. Is there an agreement from any other member of the council?
So a motion would be quite required, Mr. Mayor, to undo the, the closing of the public hearing.
Then I will move that, to be clear, I will make a motion to reopen, I guess it's to reopen the public hearing. Is that correct, Greg?
Yes.
And I move that we reopen the public hearing. We'll see if anybody wants to second it.
I will second.
Okay, there's a motion to second. I assume we need another roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
I'm muted, Sarah.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Rack? Vice Mayor Palmer-Lohan?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes, okay. Jane, before I have you speak, I want to ask, Crystal, did anyone else call in, want to speak on this?
No, we haven't received any further calls.
All right. Jane, if you wouldn't mind keeping it brief, this is rather unusual that we do this type of motion to reopen a public hearing, so please go ahead.
I really appreciate you doing that. I just wanted to speak very briefly that I wanted to let, I heard the question being asked and I wanted to respond that, yes, we did bring up these concerns many years ago, starting at the beginning of this project. This is not the first time, and I brought it up at the planning commission, a community meeting, so the, the concerns about light and air and safety have been brought up for a long time. And then I just, listening to your discussions, and I, and I had presented this information before, I just really was hoping that the the council would look at the municipal code 18.05.030-C about Walnut is, has been carved out as a resident about Walnut is, has been carved out as a residential building. It is not in a commercial district downtown. If you look at the map, we're the only one on the street that has this carved up. I believe that was done at the time that it was built. So I just wanted to make sure that that was noted, because I'm not sure if you had that information before tonight about that specific code.
Okay, I will, I will let, if Mr. Gibson or his staff wants to respond to that. But I will tell you that as my understanding that this is actually a mixed-use development and different and a different code applies. And if I'm mistaken in that, I will anxious to hear from staff.
I I got this information from the original builder of the building.
I I understand. Mr. Gibson, did you want to briefly respond?
I don't think so. I think I'll just read from the our appeal response, given it says our legal, legal counsel's terminology so that everyone's clear. The appeal failed to, one, show that staff relied on inaccurate statements or evidence. Two, offer new evidence that was not available at the time the project was approved. Three, demonstrate that the planning commission approval findings are unsupported by evidence in the record. Or four, establish that the project is in conflict with city council policy and the state density bonus law. No further comment.
Okay. I think now we probably need a motion to close the public hearing once again.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Second. Roll call?
Vice Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert? Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't.
Lisa, did you want to respond to that?
Oh, yeah, Lisa, maybe you could let, can you respond to that question about the municipal code?
Yeah, I was just.
Did I have it right?
I was just pulling up the code. So these are mixed-use building next to mixed-use building. It's not a pure residential building. But if you want to go on to another question, so I can look at the exact code wording and I can come back to that.
Okay.
Chair.
Yes, Mark.
I'm just wondering solely as Lisa is researching and for point of clarification, I know that Ms. Tenny said that she had gotten her information from the original builder. And the thought that occurred to me when I heard her say that is the city has, what the city may have revised its its land use regulations in the interim between when the hacienda was originally built and now. I don't know if that might play a role in some of the the current difference of opinion here, but I just tossed it out there in case it had a role to play.
Maybe Al could help us with that. Al Savare, are you there?
I am, Mr. Mayor. Frankly, I don't recall that this area was rezoned in our 2009 rezoning. I would note that I think there's office space in 618, if I'm not incorrect, and maybe Lisa could correct me on that. But I I think there's some, it's partly commercial already in 618, so it's not a purely residential building anyway. But the zoning, to my knowledge, has always been a mixed-use zoning or multifamily zoning there. I don't recall that we changed it, but I could be wrong.
The zoning for 618 is actually the planned development, so it's the site-specific zoning, which allows for a mixed-use building at that location, which it is. It's built as a mixed-use building. So we would not apply that additional setback since it's not an RS zoning district as the code provides.
So we, do we then have a mixed-use project planned next to a mixed-use project? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands raised. I think we are at the point where, unless I, well, that's right, we closed the public hearing, sorry, we should entertain a motion?
So I just have a procedural question. The only thing noted on the council meeting action list was to move the to move to close the public hearing, but there's no additional prompt. So I don't know, Greg or Crystal?
In the staff report, the decision process that it's staffs recommending is that you uphold the planning commission decision and deny the appeal. That's the recommendation.
I understand. Okay, so so then I guess I make a motion then to uphold the planning commission's decision? Is that how I would state that?
And to deny the appeal.
And to deny the.
I agree, need a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So, comments? Laura?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. So I I really appreciate the work on all parties to bring forward the discussion this evening. This is difficult, I think, on all sides. Al, I appreciate your sharing with me the complexity associated with this type of project. And it reminds me of shortly after I moved to San Carlos and purchased a home, I'm lucky enough to have a mortgage. The building next to me, the house next to me was torn down and a very large-scale building went up in its place. And we shared some of the same concerns that Jane so articulately brought forward tonight with respect to, you know, sunlight and air and light. And, you know, we were very disappointed that that project went through. And ultimately, you know, we got used to the fact that we lost views and some sunlight during the day. But what we ended up with in the end was a beautiful friendship with a very lovely family and are watching them raise their two children. And we're a part of that community. And so going back to our previous discussion with Ron's proclamations this evening, it reminds me that this is an opportunity for us to also be a welcoming and inclusive community in this particular case. And given the analysis that was done so diligently by staff and the planning commission, I will support the denial of the appeal. And I know that that will not be welcome news to the residents of of the hacienda. But I hope over time, the new neighbors that move in will be welcome friends.
Thank you, Laura. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I Laura said a lot of what I was going to say, so in the interest of time, I won't repeat it. People who have, may have had opportunities to read many of the things I've written over the years for the community will know that one of the phrases I often come back to is, we generally have to make, almost always have to make what I call least bad decisions, not good decisions. And this is a classic example of it. I definitely feel for the folks who were appealing the decision. I also feel for the developer. I also feel for the the additional affordable housing of a particular kind that's relatively scarce in San Carlos that the developers proposing to build, which is in fact precisely what the state law was intended to encourage. So again, there are no good choices here. But, you know, this is the least bad outcome, but I I'm going to support the motion that that Laura made.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Adam?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. And I just want to also thank staff and planning for all the work that went into this. And also thank Jane and the other folks at 618 Walnut for bringing this appeal and and articulating their concerns very eloquently. I guess for me, I'm, you know, and I appreciate the affordable housing coming in. It's something we do need, as Mark mentioned. But I'm disappointed that we, that a better solution can be found to create more space at this property, but understand the constraints that the developer is working under. And given that this is all in compliance with code, I'm going to support the motion to deny the appeal.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Sarah?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank everyone who presented this evening, especially Jane, for making such a nice presentation. And my my heart is heavy for the residents who are going to be most impacted by losing light and air from their balconies. And like Adam, I'm a little disappointed that more concessions couldn't have been made for them. But from our discussion tonight with our city attorney, it does sound like the only areas that we have to negotiate are height, floor area, and parking. And unfortunately, setbacks weren't something that we could really drive a hard bargain for. So I too will vote to deny the appeal, but it is with a heavy heart tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Before I make my concluding remarks, I was informed that there was someone who did want to speak, but unfortunately, public comment on this item is closed. Yeah, I'll just say that these are really never easy decisions. When you live in a town that is, and you live in an area that is such as the Walnut Street area is, it's, you know, it's apartment buildings, it's been zoned that way for decades and decades. It's been zoned for the height it's been zoned to. And it's it's difficult when you have people who have lived there a while and there's a development that goes in that is going to impact their quality of life. And I think the rest of my colleagues said it very well. But it is a, it is a project that meets all the zoning regulations. We really have limited choices as as a council. And I wish there were a better outcome. I would hope that Mr. Gibson and Veeves maybe rethink what they've already designed, even though this appeal appears to be, will be will be denied. If there are any, any creative solutions you can come up with during your process, I would hope that you would do that, just in the interest of your neighbors. So with that, we've had all our comments. Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. What I'd like to do now is we've been here for well over two hours and 40 minutes. I'd like to take a five-minute break before we move on to the our new business items. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. We'll see you back at 9:47. Let us resume. We're going to move on now to item 10A, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the San Carlos Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. Is we going to have Courtney Wood and Brett Hondorp?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to start off. This is Stephen Machida. Good evening, Stephen.
Oh, okay.
City Councilmember Stephen Machida, Pub Works Director. Yes, I'd like to start off. Just what we're going to be presenting is our bicycle master plan. We're going to have our consultants kind of go through and describe the process that we took to get to this point where we are right now. And then ultimately, we'd like to request that the council adopt a resolution approving the San Carlos Bicycle and Pedastrian Master Plan. So to start off, basically, the goal of the master plan is to promote walking, bicycling through creation of safe, comfortable, and connected networks. These connected networks will encourage alternatives to single-occupancy car trips, thereby increasing mobility and decreasing congestion. The master plan recommends building approximately thirty miles of bikeways, one mile of new and improved sidewalks, and thirty-nine pedestrian safety improvements. The plan is also recommending the city to adopt certain policies and programs, such as wayfinding signs, bicycle parking, shared micromobility, and school zone speed limits. So tonight, I have Brett Hondorp and Courtney Wood from Alta Planning and Design, our consultants, who will take you through the master plan process. I also have Grace Lee, the city engineer, and she serves as our project manager, who is also available to answer any questions. So now I will turn it over to Brett and Courtney.
Thank you, Stephen, and hello, members of council. I'm Brett Hondorp with Alta Planning and Design. We're the consultant who assisted the city on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. And I think I am supposed to be able to control the slides here. Crystal?
Yes, you do have control of it now. There you go.
Oh, there we go. Okay, so I'm going to run through a fairly brief presentation, just providing an overview of the plan purpose, talking about our community engagement efforts, and to sort of what your bicycle and pedestrian network is like today, and then our recommendations, implementation strategies. So the purpose of a Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, and your plan in particular, is really to establish that long-term vision for improving the walking and biking environment in San Carlos. And really, we want a plan like this to be an action plan, to identify specific projects, programs, improvements, identify the costs of those, and identify a priority. So you basically have a plan of how to get things implemented. And that's how we structured this plan. The benefits of walking and biking, I think many of these, really in these last few weeks of shelter at home, have really kind of come to light in terms of just the numbers of folks we see in communities like San Carlos who are out walking and biking, who want to get the fresh air, recreation, well-being. And these types of plans really support all these things. Walking and biking helps improve access to outdoors and recreation space. We want to really focus on safety and ensure that the risk of bike and pedestrian collisions and injuries are reduced through our actions. Of course, walking and biking are very affordable mobility options, transportation options, and can help support transit and other connectivity goals, support the city's quality of life and livability, decrease air pollution, support environmental and greenhouse gas and climate. So these are all sort of overarching benefits of walking and biking that we see through a planning effort like this. Our community engagement was really kind of multi-layered and went throughout the entire plan process. We had three community-wide workshops. We had two of those early on in the process when we were gathering information. We had one after our recommendations were developed to take their feedback on sort of our draft improvements and make sure we had heard things right and we had the right types of projects and programs recommended. We did a series of what we call pop-up events, and we often find we get really good input if we just go to where people are already out and about in the community. And so we went to events already happening in the community and gathered input. We did two walking tours, another way of really interacting with residents and going out in the field, listening and understanding their concerns around the pedestrian environment. We had an online presence. That's very important. So we had a survey and an interactive community input map where folks could either on their computer or their mobile device directly provide input on specific locations, challenges, places that they traveled by foot or by bike, and improvements they wanted to see made. We were updated the Transportation and Circulation Commission along the way, as well as the Economic Development Advisory Commission. So a very kind of comprehensive and multi-layered public engagement process. This just provides an overview of the different components of the plan, fairly standard for really any kind of master plan, but starting with the vision goals and policies, moving into existing conditions, what we called San Carlos today, which then led to our recommendations and our implementation plan. And then we had a number of appendices that really helped you as the city support that implementation, some design guidelines, which provide a bit of detail on the different tools, infrastructure tools that you might be implementing, whether those are bikeways or more pedestrian kind of enhancements, a list of funding sources, a complete list of our community engagement notes and the events that we attended. And then the prioritization, which just helps, again, align projects with a timeline for getting those implemented. Starting with the vision, goals, and objectives, as well as the policies. We had an overarching vision for this plan that San Carlos, again, working with staff and the community to develop this, that San Carlos would be a community where people of all ages and abilities can comfortably, conveniently walk or ride a bicycle. And I think that all ages and abilities is a really important aspect of sort of setting that vision, because that really sets the framework for the types of projects that you are going to develop. You want to make sure that whatever bikeway or pedestrian or trail project that comes out of this plan is something that could be used comfortably by somebody, no matter what their age means. What we say is eight to eighty, so. Families and seniors.
Crystal, there's some feedback coming through?
I'm getting some feedback. I don't know.
Yeah, we definitely hear it, but I'm not seeing... Oh, okay, it stopped.
Stephen Machida's mic is still open. Maybe if we try that?
Okay, let's try that.
Okay. We also, supporting that vision, we had three goals for the plan. The first one around really the network, maintaining a complete convenient network for walking and bicycling with connections to the region. Goal two was really about sort of awareness and encouragement, increasing awareness and support of bicycling through programs and initiatives. So that really gets at your kind of non-infrastructure pieces. It's not just engineering. It's also supportive programs and sort of programmatic pieces. And then the third goal was, again, back to that, all ages and abilities, designing roadways that are accessible and comfortable for people of all ages and abilities. So that gets to the kind of the design piece and making sure your projects are really meeting the needs of the folks that you want to be out there using them. So that's kind of the full range of ages of people who live, work, and visit San Carlos. There we go. So San Carlos today, so this is really the existing conditions for your bicycle and pedestrian network. So you have about seven miles of what we call bike routes and bike boulevards. And I'm going to have another slide that gets into a little more detail on defining these facilities. But those are basically kind of shared streets, roadways that don't have a defined space for bikes, but where bikes share that road with the motor vehicle traffic. You have close to fifteen miles of bike lanes. So those are striped facilities on the street, as well as shared-use paths. So kind of bike paths or things like the Bay Trail. And then about eighty-five miles of sidewalks. So that represents sort of where you're at in terms of your baseline. And then in terms of what we are recommending for the bikeway network, our plan recommends a total of thirty-three miles of bikeways. And I'm sure that's a bit hard to see, but in the plan, we have a series of maps. And you can see the dash lines there are the proposed facilities, solid lines are existing facilities. So really looking to create kind of a complete network that connects to all the different places of San Carlos from the communities more up in the hills area, all the way down into downtown along El Camino Real and connecting out to the Bayfront. It's a real complete, comprehensive system. And with those recommendations, we've expanded, again, expanded the mileage. So you would have five miles of shared-use paths. So those are the separated bike paths that can be used by bicyclists, as well as walkers and joggers and folks on wheel devices. You have about five miles of striped bike lanes. So those are just kind of your traditional five-foot-wide painted facility on the road. Four and a half miles of buffered bike lanes. And the difference in the buffered bike lane is there's an extra bit of paint, as you can see, that creates a little extra kind of safety space between the bicyclist and traffic. So it's a bit of a wider facility and provides a bit more comfort to the user. About three miles of those shared bike routes. And then close to nine miles of bike boulevards. And bike boulevards are really intended as sort of a neighborhood street that has a bicycle priority to it, where you might implement some traffic calming to slow the vehicle speeds down, make sure your traffic volumes are compatible with the bicyclist, and really to kind of show bikes that this is a priority route for them. It's going to be a real comfortable, low-stress facility. And again, it's something that really somebody of all ages, abilities can use. And then finally, about six miles of separated bikeways. And so these are actually physically separated. There's either sort of a concrete barrier or maybe a post, a bollard-type of post that separates the bike area from either adjacent traffic or from the adjacent parking. And that provides a real, kind of a real physical sense of separated space from the moving vehicle traffic. So that's kind of the sum of the different types of facilities that we would have under the recommended bike system. Just going to go through a few slides showing some cross-sections of different locations within the community. And again, this is not comprehensive, but these are just some kind of sample areas that we selected to show how the bikeways would be implemented from existing conditions, which is on the top, to a proposed on the bottom. So this is showing El Camino Real, the existing condition where you have travel lanes and parking, to adding a separated bike lane on each side of that. And that would require some reconfiguration of that roadway space. And this is just sort of a concept to show how that could be developed. We have a number of sections of Old County Road, which was a very, you know, sort of priority facility from the community in our conversations with its, just its north-south connection as an alternative route to El Camino Real, kind of looking at the different north-south routes through San Carlos. That was one of, that was one of the kind of important directional facility pieces we needed to look at through this process. And so looking at El Camino is one of those options, looking at Old County as another one. And there was certainly some, quite a bit of desire within our public outreach to make improvements on Old County Road. So we show a number of different segments. The Old County has quite a variable right-of-way as you move through the city. And so there are a few different sections that we show. And again, these are concepts to show how you would, how you could accommodate different types of bikeways within the right-of-way. And so at the concept A at the top there, for instance, we have a two-way kind of protected cycle track, we would call it. So that's a protected bikeway that would be on the west side of the roadway. We have it at concept that would allow us to put bike lanes in, traditional bike lanes in, and then another separated cycle track. But wait, and each of these has some trade-offs in terms of, do you need to lose parking? Do you need to make some other reconfigurations to that road? And what we're just showing here are different concepts and how you could accommodate a different bikeway. Kind of moving to another section of Old County, showing existing where you really just have a shared roadway. There's no space for a separated bikeway. And there is parking. And if you were to take that parking and reconfigure it, you could accommodate that separated cycle track. And this is in the vicinity of the Caltrain Station. And then moving north of Holly, sort of similar, looking at some different designs to take the existing just shared roadway, travel lane, and convert them into a bike lane facility. So this is important as you're just thinking about the feasibility of implementing these. It's not just the kind of lines that we show on that map, but you have some, you have some kind of options and trade, you know, with the trade-offs included to consider as you're thinking about that next phase of implementation. We also looked at pedestrian, right? This isn't all about bicycling. This is also about pedestrian environment. So showed some concepts for improving Laurel Street, where we have a pedestrian plaza. You know, and I think some of this, you know, kind of is related to the discussion you're going to have on the agenda later this evening, where you're talking about some of those slow streets and some of those changes along the business district.
If you don't mind, this is a very interesting presentation. And normally, I don't do this, but we have a long meeting and a lot of items on the agenda tonight.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if, I want to ask the council if they want to hear the entire presentation or if you want to move forward with approving it and maybe have the rest of it sent to us. So if you'd like to continue listening, please let me know. If not, let me know what you think of that idea.
Mayor, I'm open to a kind of a more expedited, high-level review. I did read the packet at length. I'm open to what other councilmembers have to say.
All right. Any other thoughts?
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to move onward from the presentation, but I do have several questions for the consultant that I would like to have an opportunity to ask, please.
Okay. All right. I mean, don't.
I would say, I'm happy to move on. I've got questions as well. Or if he's got sort of a two-to-three-minute wrap-up, happy to.
Yeah, I can breeze through it. I apologize.
Sure. Yeah, if you wouldn't mind that. And then, you know, they'll have some questions for you, but if you wouldn't mind wrapping it up in the next minute or two?
Yeah, you bet.
Thanks.
Here. So just, you know, a couple more cross-sections. And I realize, you know, it's a lot of sort of design information. I think just cannot, to sort of wrap, highlighting some of the pedestrian improvements. So we have a number of pedestrian routes. And really, for the pedestrian improvements, I think it's important to point out, those were focused along the major road corridors. So, you know, we don't have pedestrian improvements that go deep into the neighborhood streets. There's an intent to do some follow-up work around the schools with some school walk audits that was going to get at that neighborhood level. But for what the master plan focused on, it really was the kind of major street pedestrian corridors for improvements. And then this is sort of your toolkit. You know, we're talking about crossing improvements, signal improvements, beacons, and other ways to just, again, enhance safety and comfort of folks that are out there. We went through a prioritization process to really bring things together and focus on, you know, what are the critical top action projects? And those are mapped and explained. And then just some citywide projects around wayfinding, expanding bike parking, and, you know, improving pedestrian-scale lighting to support this specific network projects, as well as policy changes around school zones, micromobility, and other things. Design guidelines, and that's it.
You're muted, Ron.
Thank you, Brett. I appreciate. Thank you, Brett. I appreciate you wrapping it up. Crystal, do we have anybody who is wanting to speak on this item?
Yes, we do have one caller in the queue.
All right, if they're ready, why don't we take them?
Sure, I'll go and bring them in here. Good evening, caller, ending in one-five-zero. If you can go ahead and lower the volume of the meeting behind you, that would avoid an echo. Thank you for calling into the San Carlos City Council meeting. You'll have two minutes to address the council and you hear a chime at the end of that two minutes to wrap up. And you are now unmuted.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, hi, everybody. My name is Kendra Campbell. And I just want to give a couple of quick points about the San Carlos Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan. First of all, I think it's a great plan, but in no way do I think this can be considered a master plan. As the consultant mentioned, it is not comprehensive, especially when it comes to pedestrian walking. And it really leaves out half of the town. The Arundel and Heather Elementary School Districts that all feed into Terlinda and Meriposa are not included in some of these improvements. In April, the PTA at Arundel had planned a walkabout with the consultants and members from the city to advocate for consistent sidewalks, stop signs, crosswalks and other safe paths to our school. And because we weren't able to do that because of COVID-19, I really would implore the council not to approve the plan as is. It's a great beginning, but before, you know, considering that the master plan and signing it off is done, please just wait, pause until we can have those Arundel and Heather districts looked into. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kendra. Were there any other callers?
Yes, there's one more in the queue at this time. Good evening, caller, ending in zero-four-zero. Thank you for calling the San Carlos City Council meeting. If you can lower the volume of the meeting behind you, you'll have approximately two minutes to address the council and you'll hear a chime at the end of the two minutes to wrap up your comments. And you are now unmuted, so you can begin.
Hi, or sound check, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Mark Bauhaus, twenty-six-year resident and I live in Devonshire area. And hello, everybody. I want to thank you in advance for the next couple of related agenda items regarding the pedestrian downtown and slow streets. I think they're really part of getting this master plan implemented around bicycles and and walking in our town and making our town a livable town. And I think we're going to learn a lot and want to expand those pilots and hope that they are twenty-four-seven because the virus behavior, COVID behavior is twenty-four-seven, not just weekends. But looking forward to the pilot and learning from that and expanding it. As it relates to the master plan, there's really three things that I think are game changers that make the implementation of the plan essential. I didn't really care about previous master plans in this regard. But we're now faced in the city with densification that came up earlier with ten thousand or more new workers and residents. It's a staggering number, adding up all the new campuses and apartments and condominiums. And it's fine, it's what we need to do as a community. But ten thousand new cars would be a real problem downtown for people coming into town, trying to move around if they all were driving. So this walking and biking is going to become essential for us to have a livable town as we densify, and that's a huge change. Second, e-bikes are a real game changer. And I would encourage everybody on the council, if you haven't already, to try an electric bike or scooter, if you like that better. It totally changes the game in terms of who can comfortably move around with a bicycle instead of a car. And it gives us much more room on streets for more people to be able to to move and will, I think, allow behaviors to shift dramatically, which wasn't possible five or ten years ago. And third, the third big game changer, I think, is climate change and the climate crisis. We have to reduce emissions. We have to find a way for us to move around comfortably and safely, quickly and do it without automobiles. So I think for those three reasons, the implementation, the intentional, thoughtful, urgent, kind of vigorous implementation is important. And especially since we're rushed tonight, I would recommend further workshops and real energy in the next couple of years, not ten years, to implement this plan vigorously. Otherwise, we're going to have complete gridlock in our town and even worse climate issues than we're already facing. So again, busy night, but please, really, the implementation of this is the most important thing. And we need a lot more engagement going forward on that part. So thanks, appreciate your taking the comments.
Thank you, Mark. Crystal, do we have any other callers?
Yes, one more in the queue. Good evening, caller with a phone number ending in eight-seven-nine. Thank you for joining us tonight. If you can lower the volume of the meeting behind you, you'll have approximately two minutes to address the council and you'll hear a chime at the end of the two minutes to wrap up. And I'll go ahead and unmute you, so you may begin now. Hello, caller ending in eight-seven-nine, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, I can hear you now. Sorry, I couldn't hear you before. Sorry about that. I just want to say thank you to all the, thank you to Mayor Collins, thank you to all the council members. I know this meeting has gone much later than everyone has probably anticipated. But I am calling from the Arundel Hills around both Arundel and Heather Schools. And I would just like to say that I'm reiterating comments before that the master plan as it stands right now doesn't have a comprehensive plan for our pedestrian walking areas, especially around our schools. And so I'd like you to consider to include these areas that didn't get their school, safe school walking teams on before you consider adopting the plan. Thank you.
Crystal, any other callers?
No, I do not see any other callers.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Collins, can I, before we get, can I make a, can I make a motion to extend the meeting to eleven-thirty?
Thank you, Adam. I was just going to ask if someone would do that, so yes.
Second.
Second, all right. We need a roll call for that or can we just do an affirmation?
I'll take, I'll take a really quick one. Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Overt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parma Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruck?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, let us move on to questions. Sarah?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank staff and the consultant in Alta for doing a great job on the master plan. I think it's, I love having a master plan. I think it's a valuable exercise for the city. I think that the community engagement process was very thoughtful, so I want to commend Alta and staff for that. I think the input was really valuable. But that being said, I want to echo some of the comments that were made during public comment tonight about the hills of San Carlos, specifically around Aguelo Park, serving not one, but five schools. And it's a stated goal of the master plan to create routes to schools. And when I looked at the master plan, the need for the most sidewalks is in this neighborhood. And yet, that neighborhood is completely unaddressed in the master plan. And so I I understand that perhaps the master plan was focusing on routes but large, heavily-traveled roads. But it does seem like an awful lot of the improvements are focused in the flats and not in the hills. In fact, there's no pedestrian improvement scheduled for the hills. So I'd like to hear from staff and from the consultants about why that happened. It seems like the, I read through all of the comments in the packet. There were two-hundred-and-fifty pages of comments. And these, it's not for lack of public input into the process, but I'm interested to hear why it was left out and what we can do going forward to make sure that this large swath of town is in the master plan. Thank you.
All right, Adam.
Will I get an answer to my question, Mayor?
Oh, I I apologize. I thought we were just going to get some questions.
Brett, do you want to, Grace?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, Grace Lee, City Engineer. So in terms of the master plan, the goal was to create a backbone network so that it would lead to not only schools, but but parks and destinations. So it wasn't, it was to create a main backbone that we can build off of, that we can expand from. So a lot of the hill areas, we hear the residents and their comments about wanting their streets to feed into this backbone network. And that was the intent of the school audits, was to create these routes to the schools. And we were going to have it complement the master plan in terms of having it, those routes to school as attachments. So that can still happen. What it's reflecting now, the plan is reflecting now, is the major backbone for the city. And those, the feeder streets for more, the more local traffic, the more local pedestrian areas for the schools would be a complementary set to the the master plan. Unfortunately, we weren't able to go through with the school audits because of the school closure. But we are still intending to do those school audits. And it would be maps or routes of maps to schools. And it would be complementary to the master plan.
Great, thank you, Grace. I really appreciate that. And then those routes to school, they would be an addendum to the master plan?
They would be attachments to the master plan.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, sorry about that, Sarah. Laura?
Great, thank you. I'm getting very odd audio feedback. I'm not sure if it's me or the technology on the side or what, but just pointed out. So just a couple of quick questions. So I'd like to better understand the timing associated with the Hill and School Audit. I recognize COVID put a damper in the plans. I'd like to better understand kind of the rationale with respect to, you know, those bicycle lanes that are intended for being protected versus those that aren't. And then with the number of major pedestrian improvements, I'd like to get a little bit more color on what is the intention there. It seemed a little bit light in the document. And then finally, if you could kind of, I know that there's grant funding out there and available and I just want to understand the timing of that aspect. So in terms of our need to apply for funds.
In terms of, yeah, in terms of the school audits, that was, it's still a fluid situation. We're not really sure, once school starts back up, how that would, what that pattern would be, if that would still be a good time to do the audit. I think we're, in talking with Alta, we're going to play it by ear and see what the school's schedule is, what's the plan for the, for the students to return back to school. And we'll also work with the school district just to gauge if that, when is a good time to start back up the audit? We want it to be valuable, the audit, and not, not be, and be representative of normal patterns, as normal as pattern, as possible. So I think that's still pretty fluid on when we're going to be able to do the school audit.
And I think the second question was about bicycle protected, when we've recommended protected lanes.
Yeah, and what, under what circum, under what circumstances? Because I know those are very popular with bicyclists, no matter what part of road you're on.
Yeah, I mean, you're really talking about creating, creating that physical barrier, which is, you know, intended to just create that space between a bicyclist next to a faster-moving vehicle. So, you know, certainly on higher-volume, higher-speed roadways, that's where we are looking at implementing those. But protected bikeways do have a greater space requirement. You know, a standard painted bike lane can be five feet, can be as narrow as five feet wide. A protected bike lane, protected bikeway, you're really looking at, even in, even in a one-directional, more like eight feet because you need five feet of space for the bicyclists plus about three feet for that physical separation. So it starts to get into a bit of a feasibility question. And I think that's, that's where some of those cross-sections that we showed in the, in the slide deck kind of show where we're looking at a function of, does this road have the traffic volume and speeds that would make it a candidate for a protected bikeway? If so, is there enough width that we could even consider that facility? And so we've thrown some options out there, but certainly something like El Camino Real, absolutely, protected bikeway all the way on a facility like that, right? You're not, you're never going to get a kind of family cyclist out riding on LECR without that physical separation. Other streets, you know, you have to do your best because you don't have unlimited space. Let's face it, we're building in a constrained environment, so we're kind of looking at those trade-offs. But certainly where vehicle speeds are high and there's a lot of traffic, we'd like to provide that separation, either physically or through a painted barrier where we can.
And then can you provide a little bit more color on the pedestrian improvements and then also the funding, grant funding opportunity?
Yeah, I mean, I think the pedestrian improvements, I mean, Grace, Grace hit on that in terms of, we did look at sort of the main road corridors as, as sort of our pedestrian improvement framework. And then looked at the crossings, you know, both along and across those, you know, pedestrian collisions. And one objective of a plan like this, one of the main goals is safety, right? So we want to be looking at reducing those serious collisions that are happening to pedestrians. And those collisions are happening at intersections and at crossing points. So in terms of collision reduction, focusing on your major roadways and on your crossings of those major roadways is going to have a huge benefit when you go to prioritize projects. And, you know, to some degree, and I don't at all want to discount travel in the, in the hills and around schools, but those localized roads, you know, kind of play, they have sort of lower volumes of cars and pedestrians and so are going to be a little lower priority when you're looking at the higher level of sort of collision safety. And again, localized school improvements are super important and that's why we have that, those walk audits done. But it is, when you're doing pedestrian planning, it's really important to look at, at those higher-speed vehicular corridors and what you can do to improve those crossings. Because in terms of sort of serious risk injury, you know, high-speed collision along a main street is where you're going to have your greatest risk of, of a serious or fatal injury for a pedestrian. So that was our mindset. And then, of course, into the downtown area. And then you're, sorry, what was your final question? I guess I didn't.
I'm just trying to understand if there's any timing issues with respect to pursuing some of the grant funding that's available for implementation of these types of projects.
There's absolutely an opportunity. So Caltrans has the Active Transportation Program funding, which, you know, normally comes out in the spring. Is actually normally due, the deadline is usually about this time. Because of COVID, they've extended most of that program until September. But there is an element that's new this year that's called QuickBuild. And it's very much, I think, in the vein of some of these slow streets that you're, you're already thinking of. And it's really the idea is to take, you know, lower-cost materials and, and build out some of these bikeway and pedestrian improvements using, you know, plastic bollards and things that are much less expensive to implement. So you could get some mileage of these in. And so that program has a deadline of July fifteenth. But I would say that's a real opportunity that you would certainly want to take advantage of, if possible, to get an application in. And that could even support doing some more permanent improvements around some of your bike boulevard network or some of these slow streets that you're already considering through your program.
Great, thank you very much.
You bet.
Right, Adam.
Thank you, Mayor Collins. Thanks to Alta and to Steven and Grace and the team for, I think you did a great job with this master plan. I appreciate the focus on the backbones. I had a couple, I'll just try to list my few questions so we can kind of answer it in, in turn. Can you, one, I just on sort of El Camino as an example, you know, some of the designs also, I saw sort of loss of parking and lanes. And I know, I understand the purpose of, you know, trying to get more people biking. But has there been any look in terms of both traffic impact around that for cars, if we're going to be losing lanes? And then any feed- And then any feedback from the businesses over there who, you know, may be losing parking potentially if we were to go that route is question one. I certainly appreciate the timing on the schools, but I know, Grace, you mentioned about sort of access to parks and stuff. And so I didn't see this in here, and maybe I missed it because it was such a huge report, but, and I think I'd raised this one intersection with Stephen, but Bay Tree and Woodland, and then sort of along Woodland and Bay Tree, you've got access to Burton Park. There's no sidewalks there, there's sort of funky intersections and things. And so I know you haven't done walk audits everywhere, but I think they were done somewhere. And can you just sort of talk about that area a little bit, given that it does meet your goal of sort of connecting to parks? And then I think, and I think that's, that's sort of my two, two questions. Laura asked a question on timing, so, but again, thanks for the, the great work here.
Or, you know, we did not do traffic, like operational analysis as part of this. So I think, you know, what we're showing are conceptual ideas, and certainly to implement anything, especially on El Camino Real, would require looking at parking, doing a lot of data collection and operational analysis of whether and how you could accommodate that. You know, I think El Camino Real, even though we showed it first, I mean, it's, it's the most challenging corridor, you know, in your city in a lot of ways, right? And it's a, it's a regional corridor. It almost doesn't make sense that you would even do it, you know, sort of in isolation without, you know, connecting to, to adjacent jurisdictions. And, and, you know, obviously, there's, you know, things like the Grand Boulevard Initiative that have, that have happened. So I see that as a longer term project. And what we just wanted to convey with this is that there is space out there, and there are ways to repurpose that space, and we need to look at the trade offs in that. And of course, you'd have to work with the business community, have to understand, you'd have to understand, you know, who is using that parking? Is that parking really needed? What are the occupancy counts? So there's a lot of that kind of analysis that would have to happen before you could really come pin down a design on, on anything. And that goes for any roadway. ECR is probably the most complex, but any of these major roads, you know, Old County as well, you know, we showed a few options that require parking removal in front of residences. That would require some real consideration if you're going to make that move. But again, the, the benefit is that you do free up some space for these important connections for bicyclists. In terms of the Bay Tree area, yeah, I mean, I would say that, that is certainly an example of, of something that would be picked up with the walk audit and some of those intersections in particular that are quite wide and are almost sort of begging for a traffic circle to be dropped right in there or some kind of, something to take that space up. That is exactly the kind of thing that would be shown on these school audit maps, where we really get down to that detail and show those gaps, show the sidewalk pieces. And yeah, at the master plan level, you just don't always pick up those localized improvements. Those, those would certainly be in there. And the connection to parks as well, we would show the park, we'd show the adjacency, and you sort of show that really detailed picture on a map and the type of improvement that that could come out of that.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
Okay, Mark.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Brett and Courtney, I appreciate the, and staff, I appreciate the excellent presentation and the materials, actually quite a bit, quite a bit fun to read through it. The question I have, which I'll get to in a second, maybe, it may be sufficiently long, you may need sufficient time to answer it, that perhaps we should address it offline. But it's kind of a conceptual question that, over the years, as I've wrestled with ideas that various people have suggested to me about trying to improve the, the bike lane capacity in, in San Carlos, the bike rack capacity in San Carlos, I have this sort of uncertainty as to what's kind of the minimum width of a street that, that you could repurpose to be able to safely put vehicles and, and bicyclists on it? You touched on it briefly a couple of times in your presentation, even answering the questions just now, Brett, where you talked about some of the things in the, in the report would involve, for example, eliminating parking, which presumably is a way to buy space that you would otherwise not have. So, you know, my question is, you know, is, is it, are we basically, is it basically impossible for us to try and put a bike route on anything narrower than, say, like a collector road or something like that? Anyway, be interested in your thoughts on it. And again, if you think it's going to take a longer discussion, I'm happy to talk to you offline.
When you say a bike route, are you, you mean a bike lane, a striped bike lane? Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it, it's, it's hard to say by, by type, you know, because just roadway, collector roads vary in width. And I mean, some communities where we work in, the arterial roads have no space, right? They're just sort of old, where you have, you know, barely enough for a 10 foot lane and, and parking. So it really comes down to, to, to that space that's out there. You need a minimum of five feet for a bike lane. You know, you need about 10 feet minimum would be for, for a traffic lane. And so then, you know, beyond that, you're talking about parking, you're talking about, you know, you need sidewalk space and, and all those things. So, you know, it comes down to sort of the, the math, it's a math problem. And it's also, you know, who's using the road? You know, if you have a very low volume neighborhood street, then it's perfectly appropriate for the bikes just to share that lane with, with the cars, because you figure the cars are kind of few and far between, they're driving slowly. But, you know, as the volumes and speeds go up, you actually absolutely want to have that separation. And in that case, I think you're looking at 10 feet for the car lane, plus your five foot minimum for a bike lane. And that's sort of, that's minimum for the bike lane. Obviously, if the speeds of the cars are greater, you want to expand that, you want to start to get into that buffer area.
Yeah, and, and, and the public works, people would know this better than me, but my gut, for some reason, from things I've heard over the years, 10 feet for a car lane sounds pretty narrow. And I, I don't mean that it's not workable, but it's just that it's, I think we try to do more than that. But that's helpful.
Yeah, if there's transit, if there's freight, you know, heavy trucks, you know, you may need to consider going wider, but about 10 feet, you'd be surprised, you'd be surprised as how many cities actually have 10 foot arterials that carry a lot, a lot of traffic and can make it work, just because they don't have any other option, especially older cities. But yeah, it's, it's all, you kind of need to consider the vehicle mix as you.
Councilmember Olbert, typically, we use 10 feet as kind of the minimum sign width. We really don't want to go any lower than that, I think mainly because it do cause some, you know, just uncomfortableness as far as driving. So, but typically, that 10 foot is the minimal width of our road, our lane width.
Steve, the metric I use, which maybe you know the answer off the top of your head, is how wider, how wide are the lanes in the Holly Street corridor?
Holly Street corridor, which, which part of Holly Street?
I'm sorry, between Old County and Industrial.
I think that's probably approaching pretty close to 10 feet, maybe a little bit wider, but it's pretty close to 10 feet for each travel lane.
Okay, then, then that, that confirms what I had suspected. Brett, I, I accept what you're saying, that it can be made to work, but I would just say in passing, at least with that road, which does have a few curves in it, the lane widths there are, I can, it's, they're, they're, they're tight. It's very tight. Let me shift to a different question that was sparked by something you said. One of the other things that we've been wrestling with, and many other communities have been wrestling with, is, and it involves how vehicles are flowing, is the, you know, existence of ways and various other kind of apps, so that we get a lot more cut through traffic than, than we ever did before. So to what extent have you seen that become an issue in designing and laying out bike routes? And the answer may be that it's not an issue, that's fine, I'm just, I'm just curious, because it does mean that the cars and vehicles are going places and taking routes that they typically would not have taken?
No, it, it certainly is an issue. We're working, or we've been working with City of Emeryville for, for the last couple of years, and they have a bike boulevard network that, due to ways, one of the routes was basically turning into the, the cut through on ways. And so, you know, they had to respond to that. And, and so we worked with them to implement some traffic calming features and just to, you know, slow folks down along that. So it's a real thing, and, and it definitely, you know, makes, I think highlights the importance of good traffic calming on these facilities, that if you're really going to do a bike boulevard system, you know, sometimes we, sometimes the route, the routes we pick for bicycles, we pick them because they have good crossing points along the way of the arterial of the major streets. And those then become the logical streets that ways is diverting people to you, because cars can kind of use them as cut throughs. And so you've created an issue there where you actually have to really think about, how do you discourage that vehicular traffic while encouraging the, the aspects of the street that make it really nice for bicycling? So it's something that you have to keep an eye on. You know, technology is always changing, it's something you're, that, you know, we as transportation professionals are chasing a little bit, but it's, you know, good design of the facility, making sure that the speeds and volumes are compatible for the bike, the bicyclists that we want to use it is, is really important.
That's, that's, that's very helpful, thank you. And, and I appreciate your comment about the, you sort of have to design the things together, because you, you know, by doing one thing, you may actually attract vehicles, and you need to make sure that you offset that somehow. Mr. Mayor, that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I understand we do have one speaker, Crystal, is she still there?
Oh, through the chair? Before we do that?
Yes.
You saying speaker reminded me, meant to tell you, I have been contacted by text message by, by some of the people who had worked with me on this bicycle master plan thing. And they just wanted to pass along that a number of them have been having problems getting through. I don't know what the nature of the problems are. I don't know if there's anything we can do about it, but I just wanted to pass that on to make sure you're aware of it.
Okay, okay, good to know, good to know. Crystal, is the speaker still there?
Yes, she is. Let me go ahead and.
And do we have any others in addition to her at the moment?
We do not, but I'll go ahead and, and let the public know that if they do have a public comment that they'd like to make, to go ahead and call in now, so that they can queue up, they don't have to wait for the public speaker to finish speaking before they call.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so let me go and let, and good evening caller, ending in six, three, two. Thank you for joining us tonight. You'll have approximately two minutes, and you'll hear a chime at the end of those two minutes. And I'll go ahead and admit you in, so you should be able to speak now.
Hi, thanks for taking my call on this master plan. I really appreciate all the work everybody did for it and all the, especially openness to public comment throughout the last couple, I guess, couple of years. I did have several things I just wanted to ask about this plan and the comment, the questions that are coming up about, do we actually have enough road width to have bikes and cars and pedestrians? All three share the same routes. And I want to, I would like to know why one way street network in San Carlos was not in any way part of Alta's recommendations, because there would be a very natural way to accommodate one lane of street parking, one lane of traffic, a nice bike lane, and plenty of sidewalk space, if you just networked your city in a way that you didn't try to cram everyone in at once. I just think things, I think everyone, drivers included, would be able to move more smoothly in a situation like that. So one way streets, I would like to know what, why those were not brought up by Alta, if there's something that I don't know about them. And then one other question is, nothing in the plan has anything to do with bicycle, the bicycle boulevards that we are trying to work out, Elm, Cherry, Howard, all of St. Francis. I love that there are going to be bicycle boulevards, but I don't know where traffic is going to go. And I, I, again, this comes back to those, all those streets to me should be one way in well thought out directions that obviously I'm not qualified to do, so that they can actually be bicycle boulevards and actually reduce the traffic on them, so that, I mean, reduce in a way that the bikes and, and the cars can share. And if we have a one way traffic, we don't flood traffic to it, we actually cut it in half. And if, if you do it right, I don't think it should change your traffic numbers, it just divides up the space a little more equitably. Those are the main things. I have a lot of other comments, and maybe I can give them later, but that's the main thing. Thank you so much.
Crystal, did anybody else call in?
No, no, we don't have any more callers.
All right, thank you. Okay, I, I don't see any other comments. I, maybe we could, if we could get a brief staff response to that question about one way streets, was that something that was considered? Brett or Grace, maybe?
You know, I think one way streets can present a number of challenges, especially when you're talking about residential areas, just in terms of how folks are accessing their house. I mean, there are, there is, there can be, you know, good implementations of one way streets, and they can allow for signal synchronization that allow you to kind of meter traffic. But, you know, generally, one way streets can promote speeding, because you sort of have folks going in one direction. And so they can actually be a little counter to some of the objectives that we're trying to get at with this plan, and they do create challenges with directionality. It might not be that hard for a car to go kind of one way to get to their, to their house, but someone on a bike, you know, if, if it's the shortest path, they're going to be going contra flow to traffic, and that creates issues. So it's a real challenge to implement, you really have to think about directionality. And it's just not something that we would implement on a widespread level, just to kind of gain space. We would look at traffic moving in both directions and really trying to calm that traffic, lower those volumes, and make it compatible, or provide that separate space where we have major roadways to do that.
Okay, thank you, Brett. I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt resolution 2020 dash 37, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving the San Carlos Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any other discussion before we vote? Through the chair. Hold on, Mark, Laura had a comment?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. So I wanted to echo the thanks to staff and Alta for your work here, as well as all the public who have provided input on this. This is a pretty exciting effort, and I know that it falls short in some areas. I think there's good reason for that. It sounds like COVID got in our way. And Grace, I'm appreciative of hearing that there are addendums and attachments that can be added on to this. And it strikes me that this is really kind of a pivot point for San Carlos, and it's a way of thinking, this plan. And my hope is, is that we can continue to build on it in the future. I recognize it's not going to meet everybody's needs straight out the gate, but I think it's an excellent step in a really positive direction for our community, for all of the reasons that were discussed above. So thank you for your time and effort on this.
Thank you, Laura. I don't see anybody else. Mark, you had started to make a comment, did you want to say something?
Yes, I did. The, the comment I wanted to make is, is I do plan on supporting this motion, but I, I would really encourage staff to make sure that we could continue doing the outreach and inclusion efforts for the areas of town that people were referring to, that they, you know, they felt were inadequately addressed, and that those addendums and additions and whatnot, you know, are not, we don't wait on the next master plan that we put together, however many years in the future it's going to be before we do that. So I'd love to see this be a living document and, you know, have us accommodate those other sections of town as quickly as we can.
Okay, thank you. Adam?
Thank you, I just want to, I'll send, I'm going to plan to support the plan, I appreciate all the work that was done on this, and I wanted to echo council member Obert's comments that this is a living document, and that we keep working on some of those next sections, and it doesn't, you know, we don't lose sight of that, but.
Okay, thank you. Sarah?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm just going to chime in and say that I agree with all of that as well. I'm hoping that staff can really stay focused on addressing, one of the primary goals of this plan was safe routes to school, and I think that's really important, and we've included some improvements in the flats. And I think that if we can keep our eye on the hills and work to address those needs expeditiously, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I think there's a consensus that this is a work in progress. Okay, Crystal, please call, roll.
Vice Mayor Palmerlohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack? I'm sorry, Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay, let's move on to item 10B, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the temporary closure of the six and 700 blocks of Laurel Street and temporary, temporarily eliminating the parking on portions of Laurel Street and San Carlos Avenue, and adopting a resolution approving street bicycle loop plans and ratifying the city manager's emergency authorization to purchase the materials to implement the Laurel Street closure and street bicycle loop plans. Stephen, I see you are the main guy right now.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Stephen Machida, Public Works Director. So tonight, what we'll be discussing is the temporary closure of the segments of Laurel Street by adding some barriers that allow for dining and actual additional shopping. Uh, and then other rule, uh, other segments on Laurel as well as on San Carlos Avenue, and then implementing the bike loops, uh, area that kind of really encompasses Cherry, Cedar, Elm and San Francisco. So the agenda is, you know, we'll be talking about the purpose of planning, engagement, design and implementation. So basically, the purpose is really to encourage pedestrian activity. Uh, we're trying to extend into the outdoor dining and provide physical activity via bicycle and pedestrians. So basically on the planning side, the, uh, the street, um, ad hoc committee was formed, uh, street, excuse me, uh, street closure ad hoc committee was formed from President Mayor Collins and Councilman Adam Murat. Basically, um, along with staff, we're looking to analyze various alternatives, uh, that could be done for the street closure of Laurel as well as the bike loops. We actually include an engagement, uh, with the community where, um, I also, they actually had done, taken some surveys, uh, to reach out to a lot of the businesses on, uh, Laurel. And then, you know, we also want to have community meetings with the bicycle group as well. So we're at the step, or as actually for implementation. So tonight, I'm really going to be talking about the recommendations that the subcommittee actually kind of came up with and, and present that to the full council. So let's first talk about Laurel Street closure. So the committee met four times, I know, actually in the last three weeks. And each time we met, um, kind of, we always fine-tuned the design. Basically, it was determined that, you know, we need a kind of a long enough term to really, uh, make sure that this is work. So what we're proposing to do is the program would end or would start, you know, soon and then end in December twenty twenty. So looking at, um, Laurel, Laurel Street, uh, we're going to be starting from the nine hundred block and moving northward. So looking at, um, Laurel, Laurel Street at nine hundred blocks. So basically what we would be installing are, we call them either the barriers or water walls. And, and those are the walls that we would fill up water and then we would actually mark off the area along the parking, like the ankle parking on Laurel Street at the nine hundred block. But, uh, at the request of the fire chief, he, he also wanted, um, some openings in the barriers to allow for prior access as well as any medical emergencies. So we're doing this, um, for the, the business ails arsenal as well, as well as some refuges. But as you can see on Laurel Street, we're not really closing the street in this location. Um, traffic will remain two-way in both directions. So moving northward, we're going to be talking about the eight hundred block of Laurel. Very similar to what's happening in the nine hundred block, we're going to actually use the water walls, um, basically south of Beantyneet to Aurora Street on the west side of the street. And, um, from essentially south of the Chase parking, Chase Bank parking lot, um, to just a little bit shy of the Borough Express on the east side of the street. And as you can see, there's going to be some openings, uh, again, to allow for prior access as well as, um, medical emergencies. Again, in this segment of Laurel Street, uh, the street will remain open, two-way traffic, except once you get to Olive Street, um, we, we're actually going to close off that street with essentially water walls. Well, we're going to barricade it off. So any food track, any food traffic to Laurel will not be permitted. So either if you're traveling northbound on Laurel Street, you know, you'd have to make a, a right or a left. But Olive Street will remain open to food traffic. So moving northward, talking about the seven hundred block, again, we're going to have water walls here which would close the streets. However, we're going to allow, um, kind of, uh, deliveries or service vehicles to enter into the street, even though it's going to be closed during the hours of eight AM to six AM. And again, this is to allow any merchants that might receive deliveries. Uh, they would normally receive deliveries on Laurel to continue to receive deliveries, uh, on Laurel Street. In some cases, what we found is there are a lot of businesses that actually don't have access to the back alleys either on the west or on the east side. So that's why we have to make some concessions or some ability to have, uh, have merchants receive their deliveries. But as you can see, from Olive Street going northward, uh, we're going to make this one-way. And the reason why we want to do that is actually kind of control the traffic or control, control the movement. So, um, we won't have a mixture of, uh, vehicles going, uh, in, in opposite directions. Uh, basically, we kind of keep control of the traffic. Um, we're also going to, uh, we actually still need to talk to the various banks, um, because we also want to barricade off their driveway entrances to Laurel. Again, we, you know, basically these parking lots, the Clark parking lot will be open. However, we don't want anybody to make a mistake, uh, let's say, go to the bank and then decide, oh, okay, I'm going to go out to how I normally go out to Laurel Street when Laurel was, Laurel Street is actually closed. So we still have some work to do to contact some of the banks, but this is our intention is to kind of block off, uh, a lot of these, uh, driveways on, directly onto Laurel Street. So as you move northerly towards Cherry Street, again, we're going to have, uh, these two Xs here and there are going to be, uh, water walls that will have openings about twelve foot in width. And this will allow, um, emergency vehicles to, um, to access the Laurel Street as well as our service vehicles and any delivery trucks. Um, Cherry Street will remain open, uh, only to food traffic. You will, will not be able to make a left or right turn into the, uh, into Laurel unless it's between the hours of, uh, six to nine when deliveries are available. Moving further north to the six hundred block, very similar to what's happening in the seven hundred block, Laurel Street will remain as one-way. We'll have water walls here and here. Um, we'll continue to kind of barricade off, uh, the Wells Fargo, um, driveway. And then we're going to actually put water walls right at the, essentially the Wheeler Plaza surface parking lot. The reason why we decided to do that is that way you'll still have people, will still have access to this parking lot and deliveries could still actually make their entrance into this alleyway that serves, uh, the east side alleyway in the back. Um, we're still maintaining that twelve-foot opening, again, to allow, um, emergency vehicles as well as delivery vehicles. Um, San Carlos Avenue will continue to have a kind of like four-way traffic pattern. So that really can, kind of concludes Laurel Street. Um, so now let's talk about San Carlos Avenue. So, uh, unfortunately, because San Carlos Avenue is, uh, highly traveled, we really couldn't block the traffic. So, similar to the eight hundred block, um, we're actually going to use water walls and we're going to, um, kind of barricade off the ankle per, ankle parking stalls, um, starting from essentially the corner of Laurel and San Carlos and extend it all the way down to that transition where you get, uh, towards the bright, dedicated right turn lane from San Carlos to, uh, Camino. Again, we're still going to maintain those openings that the fire chief had requested. And this would be on the south side of San Carlos. And then on the north side of San Carlos, we'll use the water walls essentially from the driveway between Tudy Prudy and Coldwater Banker. And we'll continue all the way up to the essentially intersection of, uh, Laurel and San Carlos. Again, maintaining the two, uh, openings in the water wall, in the water walls. And then again, this is the intent is to allow kind of the dining and any merchants that may wish to use the street, uh, for additional, um, shopping, uh, or for dining tables. It'll allow them to use the street. So, um, so one of the things that we also determine is, um, if we are going to close, let me go back to the, to the slides. If we go back on the seven hundred and the six hundred block, we're actually going to be, um, eliminate a lot of four-entree parking, uh, accessible parking stalls. Excuse me. Alright. Um, and so what we decided to do was we're going to add nine new accessible start, accessible parking stalls in four of our, um, city plazas. So currently, as you can see in this table, uh, we have two in Clark Plaza, one in Wheeler Plaza, for a total of three. So now we're going to add, um, two additional in Clark, two additional in Wheeler, uh, three in Williams and two additional in South Plaza. So we're actually going to add, uh, nine new ones for a total of twelve within our, uh, park, parking plaza. So here's kind of a photo. We just recently completed these. Uh, here's some photos that we just took, I believe it was just last week. So here's the, the, the one existing in Wheeler and then the two additional ones that we just installed and then the Wheeler Plaza lot, we have three brand new. So the next thing I wanted to kind of let council know is actually, I was able to attend a webinar just last week. Um, and, you know, this is the really hot, hot topic of a lot of transportation engineers. But basically, the National Association of City Transportation Officials, or NATCO, uh, they just published this guide Streets for Pandemic Response and Recovery. And as you can see, it was dated May twenty first, uh, twenty. Some of the key outlines that, uh, key tasks that they outlined in the report are planning, engagement, design and implementation and monitoring. Well, interesting enough, this just happened last week. Um, this, you know, what I really determined or looking at their plan is the subcommittee and the staff actually created exactly what the NATCO design guidelines are suggesting. And what that really tells me is, you know, within the three weeks that the subcommittee met, we actually had, essentially did what the NATCO did, probably took them about three months to do. So again, and once again, um, San Carlos is kind of a leader in trying to move forward on, on a lot of the different things. But I just wanted to give you an example of what they were planning to do, uh, with NATCO guidelines. And here's their, um, example for outdoor dining. And as you can see, uh, they're using the protected spaces. In this case, they're using the little traffic barrels that you might see. And then it looks like they coordinated off with some type of rope or some type of other, um, barriers. Um, we're going to have something a little bit more stouter, basically, uh, where you're going to actually have barriers that are probably three foot high. And so, you know, it offers a little bit more protection to the diners and shoppers. So this is, um, but I, I really found it very interesting that, you know, we actually came to the same conclusion as this kind of a, a professional group had come up with. So I'll, I'll pause here. If there's any questions, um, you know, on, on the Laurel Street closures, otherwise I'll continue on to, uh, bike groups.
Um,
Yep.
Before we go on, let me just, uh, well, why don't we do this? Let, i- if any, uh, council members have any questions before we go on, um, I think, well, if there is a public comment, we'll, uh, we'll take that after the finish of the presentation. Um, Adam, you had a question?
Alright, trying to unmute and do all these things at once. Um, yes, thanks, Mayor Collins. Um, I just want to, Stephen, I think, and obviously having been on the subcommittee, I appreciate all the work that was put into this and your point in a very short, um, time period. I just want to add one sort of comment and one, one question. And the comment, I just, I, I think it gets confusing sometimes when you sort of have the one-way sign up there and you talk about things. So I think it just, we want to reiterate that we are talking about closing that seven hundred and six hundred block. I, I think it sort of gets confusing. So I just want to confirm that to the public. Um, and then second, can you talk to me about the, the twelve-foot openings, I understand for, um, uh, delivery trucks and other things? I mean, what other deterrents do you have planned to the other cars? Cars don't just say, oh, there's an opening here big enough for me to go.
Oh, I, I apologize. I, I probably didn't explain that thoroughly. So what we actually have on a twelve-foot opening, however, during the regular closure of the, of the road itself, it will actually have probably more likely the A-frames kind of stationed within that twelve-foot gap. That kind of, you know, with road closed, with road closed signage, meaning that basically the road is closed. I think during the morning, early morning hours, those signs will, or those barricades will still be there, except when delivery trucks and, and we'll probably need to open about, probably at six o'clock and we'll have, have that available or open for the delivery trucks or our service vehicles or, uh, anything, any other vehicles that might need to access, say for instance, uh, you know, sheriff's need to access that, maybe not for emergency, but just generally just for patrol. We'll have that open and available. And then that come at nine o'clock, we would actually return those A-frame barricades, uh, to that, within that twelve-foot space.
Great, thank you. That's helpful.
So, oh, Mr. Mayor, I, I did forget one thing. And, and I, I know Al had some presentation on, uh, on the, uh, on the loops or, excuse me, on, on his items. So I'd probably like to turn that over to Al.
Stephen, before we do that, there were a couple other questions for you on this-
Okay, I, I, I apologize.
Yeah, first Mark and then Laura.
Thank you, Ron. Uh, thank you, Steve. Um, let me try and go through these quickly. Um, given that, uh, that, that first area of Laurel that you were describing, I think is near where Refuge is. Um, uh, and, and that's the water wall kind of arrangement. Um, again, I want to bring up the issue of did we, why aren't we considering doing something exactly like that down the south end of Laurel Street? There are some other restaurants down there who might, I presume are in the same kind of economic situation, who would benefit from the same kind of thing. Uh, and it looks to me like the approach that you're using on the slide you just put up would be adaptable to literally any stretch of Laurel Street you could imagine.
Oh, you're, you're, you're correct. I mean, the water walls are available and they, they could, however, uh, in discussions with the subcommittee, uh, you know, we, we really feel that this still is a pilot. And so we actually have to have some cutoff or some, some period where, um, we, we, we can't do everywhere. So I, I think it was decided that we would probably just take it down to the nine hundred block. Um, if in fact that, you know, council wants to continue to move further south.
I'm going to ask you, uh, because I've got a few other questions to get through. I will just briefly mention, we can discuss this later. We are doing so much of the restaurant sections of Laurel Street to leave out the other people, I think is politically very problematic, but that, that may just be me. Um, second question is, uh, on that same area with Refuge, I was surprised that there was a requirement to put an emergency access path, the opening, double yellow lines. I mean, that's only got to be what, like forty feet, something like that? I mean, is the fire department really that sensitive that it needs, you know, that that's necessary?
Well, I, I, I think, you know, we, I, I actually installed it. I mean, I, I think we'll have more discussions with the fire chief. If in fact, um, he feels that it's not necessary, we'll actually just close it. It's just a matter of moving the, the water walls around.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I, I can see that. So it could be a design thing done at the last second. Um, uh, next question is, and I think this relates to the one, the question that Adam or the comment Adam just made. I was going back and forth with Jeff and I could have sworn that Jeff told me after our last meeting that I had misunderstood and that there were in fact sections of Laurel Street under this proposal that would be closed. And the way I tend to think of it is closed like what we do with Farmer's Market, where they literally would be closed. And I just want to, um, whether that's it's like it would be happening or not.
Um, I, I, uh, council member, um, you, you broke up, so I didn't hear your question.
Okay, yeah, I'm getting some interference now too. So question, will, under this proposal, is there any part of Laurel Street that will be closed the way we closed Laurel Street for Farmer's Market where there is basically, uh, you know, the center part of the street is usable as well by pedestrians?
Um, so let me go to, um, I'm having trouble advancing the slides, but basically the intent is, um, the dining and shopping would be remain within the ankle parking stalls um, of, uh, of Laurel Street, so on the seven hundred and six hundred block. Um, essentially the travel lanes in Laurel, there would not be any, let's say, street furniture, dining tables and things like that. However, uh, and, and that's to allow, um, you know, the emergency vehicles to access down Laurel. However, that area would be available for, uh, pedestrians, uh, to kind of walk and, and, um, and, and, you know, gain some physical activity if they want. So it would be available. And that's the reason why we want to close Laurel Street down at nine. And then from nine o'clock on, uh, pedestrians would be allowed to walk the entire, uh, entire Laurel Street.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Um, so the, um, great. Uh, and last question, which, uh, maybe is going to be addressed in some other part of the presentation. So, uh, if it is, it's prefer it to then please. Um, as several of us mentioned, and I did early on in this meeting, there is an issue of, uh, compliance with health regulations. In other words, of ensuring that, that restaurants that are being given this benefit and other businesses, but I'm thinking mostly restaurants, are actually complying with health regulations. and other businesses, but I'm thinking mostly restaurants, are actually complying with health regulations. Um, because we have some reports of some restaurant, most restaurants are complying, but some restaurants are not. And, and I would not want to see the restaurants that are following the law to be in disadvantage, basically with some of their peers who may be skirting the rules a little bit. So was there any thought to, uh, uh, enforcing the health regulations in this? Or is that, that, uh?
So, um, yes, that, that discussion did come up. I, in, in fact, in, in our management meeting, as far as, you know, ensuring that, um, the health order about social distancing is, is, uh, complied or obeyed. Um, uh, and, and I know that, you know, we can talk about, um, perhaps having our code enforcement actually do some of that effort as well as, you know, perhaps, uh, working with the sheriff's department. But for the most part, it'd probably be under our code enforcement.
Um, Stephen, there's one other, um, issue we, we added to the, um, resolution on this is there's an encroachment permit requirement. And so we intend to add to the encroachment permit some of these, um, requirements. Um, so that if, if there's a lack of compliance, we, we would have another tool to, uh, to remedy the situation by revoking their permit.
I, I see. Okay. Uh, thank you. Um, I, I think I will probably want to discuss that in more detail when we get to discussion, but that's my questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mark, thank you. Uh, Laura?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. Um, so a call, comment and a couple of questions. So I, I did raise at the last council meeting my interest in wanting to see the program extended down, uh, South Laurel. So I just want to just remind, uh, the team, uh, that I did share that sentiment. Um, so I'd be in favor of, um, making the program equitable. Question, um, on, when I look at the proposed, uh, parking constraints on the 700 and 600 blocks, what I'm wondering about is on the perpendicular Cherry and Olive, would there be any consideration given to creating short-term parking along that? Um, my thinking would be that, um, people are likely going to loop around and try to, you know, run a quick errand. And right now lots of those curbs are, you know, two hour in duration. So that's something that I think would be valuable for us to consider, maybe not right at the moment, but, um, as we kind of move into this. And then the second thing is timing. So again, I heard some of the same sentiments, um, that were shared earlier today about, uh, kind of the reopening and people trying to get back to business and not necessarily doing it and maybe the way that was intended. So the sooner that we can get this program up on its feet, I think the better chance we have of ensuring that our restaurateurs can do this in a safe way.
Regards to, um, kind of the parking addition on the cherry sheet. So that, that's something that we probably would be interested in looking at. I, I would suggest kind of as, as you stated, uh, you know, it might be something that we, we kind of take a look at. We kind of roll the, roll the program out and see, you know, what type of utilization we get. And then if we do need to make adjustments as far as the parking, we can do so. Um, I, I think sometimes trying to predict something ahead of time, sometimes that doesn't always work very well. And so my, my recommendation is to let's roll the program out and then we can make adjustments as we go along. And, and thank you for, uh, for actually asking the question as far as, um, you know, when do we think we can roll this out? So actually, um, as the resolution had stated, um, you know, the city manager had made an authorization to actually purchase all the water walls. Um, because, uh, it was kind of of the essence and actually we're competing with many other cities who are kind of doing the same thing. Um, so we are actually scheduled, uh, from, from the shipper, we're actually scheduled to receive the water walls by the end of this week. So by the 12th, um, I talked to my superintendent. Uh, he anticipates or he, what he wishes to do, assuming we receive the shipment is he'll have this plan kind of set up, uh, by the end of the day or probably towards the later, later portion of that day on Friday. You know, so that the basically this could be rolled out, uh, at least by the 13th or this coming Saturday. Now, one of the concerns that we do have and, and we've seen it with COVID is a lot of times our shipments, they get delayed for whatever reason. So as a backup plan, um, you know, we may not be, be able to do the whole, whole plan as shown or as described tonight. However, we can, we will be able to close down the 700 and 600 block. Um, and, and close down that street and kind of, um, un- until that shipment arrives, the water walls will arrive. Uh, and we do it, would anticipate it would be here no later than the 15th if, if there were a problem. But again, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to pre- project on something that, you know, uh, what, what shipper has told me is they, the water walls are scheduled to arrive here in San Carlos, uh, by the 12th. So that's this Friday. So I, I guess the good news is we're trying to get this thing up and running, uh, by the 13th if the city council, uh, approves our plan.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Sarah?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Laura asked my question. So, um, I just wanted to ask if you need a motion to, um, extend the meeting until 12:30?
Uh, I think we do.
Okay, I will move to extend the meeting until 12:30.
Second.
All right, uh, Crystal?
Uh, through the chair.
Uh, Mark, uh, did you have a question?
Actually, just a statement. Um, I'm, I have to apologize, but I'm not terribly comfortable extending the meeting until 12:30. I'm fine if that ends up being the majority rule, but I'm not promising to be here. Okay? So, um, uh.
Yeah, I, I understand. I only did it that long. I didn't think that we would go that long, but I just didn't want to have another motion. So.
No, I understand. And, and, and I'm, I'm just saying that, that, uh, you know, I would personally prefer, as we're coming up on 11:30, that we, if Greg tells us what the quickest we can do it, schedule another meeting, you know, another virtual meeting for later this week to finish the agenda. Um, but, you know, the majority will rule, I, I'm just, I'm not promising to be here if it's later than some time that I'm not quite sure what my cutoff point is.
Okay, noted.
Okay. Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Uh, no.
Vice Mayor Parmalohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Councilmember, and Mayor Olbert? Mayor, uh, I'm sorry, Mayor Collins. I'm tired. Mayor Collins.
Temporarily put them back into the job. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, um, okay, uh. Crystal, were there anybody who wanted to speak on this issue?
No, I don't see any callers.
Okay, great. Um, all right, um, well, I guess we could probably entertain a motion unless there are any more questions.
I move to adopt resolution 2020.
Dash 38.
A resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos approving the temporary closure of the six to 700 blocks of Laurel Street and temporarily eliminating the parking unfortunes of Laurel Street and San Carlos Avenue and ratifying the city manager's emergency authorization to purchase the materials to implement the Laurel Street closure.
Um, Mr. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The resolution calls for a date to be inserted of when the temporary closure would end. Um. We, we intentionally didn't know how long you wanted the temporary closure to, to go, so we left that blank. Um, we did provide though, that the city manager could extend it without coming back to the council for an additional 90 days after your expiration if, um, if after, um, assessing the situation, um, and the, and the, whatever the current health orders are going to be, whether that's necessary or not.
Okay, I, it was my impression that we were going to do this for six months.
Now, I heard, I, I heard it, I heard it stated through the end of this year, but I, I could have misheard.
And, and if that's the date you want to put in, we'll just insert December 31st. I just wanted to make sure it was part of your motion, uh, Councilmember Parmalohan.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Okay. Any other discussion?
Uh, yes, uh, through the chair.
Yes.
Um, uh, actually two questions. One is a quick one. I, but I'm looking at the, maybe I've got an old agenda. I'm looking at an agenda here. It seems to imply that what we'd be voting on is actually including not only Laurel Street, but also the bicycle loop plan.
Uh, there's a second resolution.
Oh, I see. Separate resolution. Got it. Okay, fine. Um, uh, I, I personally would like, before we vote on this, I'd like to have a little bit more color from staff on what they were thinking as regards, uh, uh, ensuring that participants in the program, beneficiaries of the program are following the county health regulation. However, those may evolve over time. I mean, they're obviously going to be evolving. I know Greg had mentioned that, that there's a requirement for an encroachment permit, but I'd like to have a little more sense of how that would actually work. Because I, I tried to find detail in the, in the agenda packet and I, at least I couldn't find it. It just says that there will be an encroachment permit, but it doesn't say how the process works.
Mr. Mayor, I can provide some color to that if you're okay with that.
Yes, go ahead, Al.
Sure. So as you know, the restaurants opened very recently and, and we are fair that the community has been observing some of the restaurants and some of the folks, um, perhaps not adhering to the, uh, social distancing, physical distancing requirements. And so in the last couple of days, we've been strategizing about how to reach out to the restaurants and, um, make sure that they understand what the county health order requires and, um, and do it in a, in a business friendly. Um, so we've been looking at the, at the county health order and making sure that we understand it. And we have prepared a letter and an email, uh, that would go out to all the restaurants and retail establishments on Laurel Street and remind them, uh, as to what the county health order says, how they're supposed to put their tables, how the, how the folks are, how many people are supposed to be at a table and et cetera. Uh, and let them know, um, what that is. And then let them know also that, uh, in the next few weeks, our enforcement officer would be, um, kind of doing some checks down the street and kind of give them a heads up, uh, that we would take an active, uh, role and kind of having somebody take a look at, at, um, how these restaurants and retailers are, are behaving. We've also talked to the county health department and they intend to do some, uh, spot checks on restaurants uh, in the county as well at the end of June. So we'll be kind of sharing those responsibilities and looking out, uh, along Laurel Street and, and in the downtown to see that the restaurants understand, um, what the requirements are and to make sure that they're operating, uh, in conformance that we just came up with in the last couple of days. And, um, so you may see some things, uh, or hear that, um, city staff is reaching out to them.
A couple other, uh, things that I could add to that, uh, council member Olbert. My understanding of the health order is that the businesses are required to have a written plan in place. And so we wanted to make that a requirement of the, uh, permit process, the encroachment process, that they provide us a copy of their plan so that we, we have it on file and we know that they've done it. And then we can hold them accountable to their own plan that was developed in their own words. Um, and then we also wanted to develop a flyer that they would be required in their permit to display that would have the basic rules of the health order, um, that would be visible to their customers. So that their customers, if they were, you know, witnessing something that they didn't feel right, they could also see the rules nearby and be able to confirm their suspicions. Um, and, and then having a contact number that of either the city or, and/or the county that they could call to report issues.
Um, well, I, I appreciate that. And in, in, in broad outline, I'm glad to see that, that staff has anticipated, has anticipated this kind of issue. But let me be a little bit blunt here, uh, not about staff. Um, you know, I think we've all gotten reports from, uh, actually I've got them from a number of people observing some restaurants that were, I mean, one restaurant was apparently even running a speakeasy, which I thought was kind of interesting, sort of 1930 style. Um, made me think we were back in prohibition and other, you know, supposed situations where there was indoor dining, which is, is not allowed, just flat out not allowed, and people congregating in bars and whatnot indoors. Um, uh, so everything that you, you and Jeff and Al described, I, I think is laudable and it's probably the framework of a good idea. The one thing that personally I have a problem with, I don't want to be like a maled fist with this thing, but frankly, I don't want to do the traditional and rightfully, it would have served us well for years. I don't want to do the traditional, uh, business friendly San Carlos approach. Okay? This isn't a matter of money or tax revenue or whatnot. This is potentially people getting sick and dying. Okay? I mean, uh, before this meeting today, I don't know if you guys saw it, I saw a whole flurry of reports about how, uh, uh, infection rates are spiking again in, uh, states that opened early um, and have been opening aggressively. And, you know, uh, I, uh, you know, again, this is just my opinion. I, I like everything you said, but it needs to be a little firmer. It needs to be more on top of it. It needs to be more like, guys, this is what we really expect you to do. And if we find that you've, you're not, you're not following it, we give you maybe one warning, but the second time you lose your encroachment permit for some period of time. Okay? Now, I'm happy to have them come back and say, well, we'll follow the rules correctly afterwards and you can give them a new encroachment permit. But I, I personally just don't want to be associated with authorizing people getting sick and potentially dying so that we can open restaurants. I want to open the restaurants, but I want to be safe.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Um, I've been informed, we have two speakers. So, uh, Laura, did you want to say something before we have the speakers or would you, would you mind waiting?
I'm, I'm happy to wait. I'm eager to hear the public. Thank you.
Okay, great. I, I apologize. We didn't have them before and because of the format, it's not always easy for people to get through. So Crystal, do you want to have those two people come on?
Okay, we actually have three now. So.
Oh, okay.
Bring in the first one. Good evening caller, ending in 115. Thank you for joining us tonight. Um, you'll have approximately two minutes to address the council and you'll hear a chime at the end of those two minutes to, uh, begin wrapping up your comments. And if you could state your name before proceeding, that would be appreciated. Uh, you are now unmuted.
Yeah, hi, I'm Matt Hall. I've been a resident of San Carlos for nine years. I guess my question is with these easements, um, what about a restaurant that is next to a location that does not, uh, serve business during restaurant hours? Is that restaurant allowed to use the easement of their neighbors? Or are they only allowed to use the easement they're allotted? And how are those easements allotted is, I guess what my question is.
Uh, maybe as, we could have a staff briefly respond to that?
Um, I guess I can, uh, try to respond to that, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, what we had talked about with the subcommittee as well is, um, they would be able to use the, the parking area in front of the business. But, um, if they, um, if the next business over was okay with like a restaurant adding tables in front of that business, with that some kind of an agreement, that that would be acceptable.
Okay, all right. Um, Crystal, uh, the next speaker?
Yes. Good evening caller, ending in 632. Thank you for joining us. I believe this is Ms. Sonia Elks. Uh, you have two minutes and you'll hear a chime at the end of the two minutes to begin wrap up. You may begin now.
Hi, this is Sonia Elks. I just wanted to comment on the downtown Laurel. I love it. I'm excited about it. It's something to look forward to in San Carlos this summer. Thank you. I just had two comments. One is I would love to see the intersection at Laurel and Cherry not be open to through traffic. Because you'll have moving cars passing right through the middle of this downtown pedestrian zone. Um, and especially since Laurel brought up the idea of parking, you actually, if you did close that intersection, Cherry and Laurel, you would end up with two kind of dead zones where you could put street parking, um, on Cherry between El Camino and Cherry, or wherever the, um, alley is. And then in the other direction as well. So if you close off that intersection, you might end up with, uh, two little extra parking spaces. Then the other thing I wanted to say is regarding downtown, I would love for city council to consider the possibility of making more handicap, a, a nice big lot for just handicap parking, if that's even feasible for where people need to park. But we just have such a large lower mobility population, elderly in San Carlos. Um, and I want to make sure that with the downtown parking being reduced, they still have plenty of parking within as close as possible. And people who are more able-bodied can park than a block or two away. Um, I would love to see the. than a block or two away. I would love to see the we have the plaza net between south of Blue Line Pizza made into a parking area for handicap only. I think that would be a great drop off zone for Lyft and Uber and and people picking up and dropping people off and then handicap parking exclusively there, just to make sure that people who can't, aren't super mobile can park easily downtown. Thank you.
Okay, another speaker?
Yes, our last speaker, it looks like, is caller ending in number 282. Thank you for joining us tonight. You have approximately two minutes to address the council, and you'll hear a chime at the end of the two minutes to begin wrap up. And you are now unmuted.
Thanks. My name is Ally, sorry. And I am calling in regards to additional questions regarding retail businesses during all of this. It seems like your focus is really on the restaurants here. Oh, sorry, I wasn't sure if I could be heard. But so pretty much I just feel that your focus is on the retail business or on the restaurants, and there's no focus here of any conversation on retail businesses. Where are the customers going to park that want to shop in the retail stores that are allowed to be open because of COVID restrictions are allowing them to be open now? And what does this mean for them? They can't put their merchandise out every day to set up shop in the sun on the street. So it just kind of seems like this is so focused on restaurants when there's also retail businesses in San Carlos, too.
Thank you. Al, can you just briefly respond to that? I think there was some accommodation for non-restaurant businesses, was there not?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Mayor. So the intent of the program is to allow retail businesses to also use the parking area in front of their businesses. So that's that is possible. And it may be best to those businesses as well. There's parking in the surrounding areas. You know, the city's going to, our residents and customers are going to have to use the parking that we have in Williams Plaza, South Plaza, Clark Plaza, and Wheeler Plaza. And we're looking at leasing the upper floor of the Samtrans Building as well for employees that use downtown. And those actually, those spaces are already available for employees of the town.
Okay, thank you, Al. Now, back to Laura.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Collins. I appreciate that. So I'm enthusiastic about this program. You know, I think what we've heard tonight is that there's a real struggle with applying some of these physical distancing requirements in the current configuration. I know, you know, just from my professional experience outside of city council and the work that I do, trying to bring my company into compliance with this, it's, you know, while the statements of requirements for physical distancing are fairly simple and but trying to actually create space to make it easy for people to adhere to social distancing requirements is actually very complicated. So this effort to increase the footprint effectively of these businesses downtown, I think will go a long way to helping with that. And I'm appreciative of staff's approach towards trying to educate and help these small businesses try to understand how to apply these principles. Because again, I work for fairly large company and it's, you know, a large team of people working on it. And even then, it's complicated for us to think through. So I think whatever we can do to help them understand how to apply it and help the public understand what their role is and responsibility, you know, all of us taking personal responsibility to minimize the risk, I think is an important one. But I want to commend staff and the subcommittee for pulling this together so quickly. And I'm hopeful that you will continue to work with the businesses downtown to optimize this over time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Adam?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. I just want to also say I'm looking forward to planning to support this and am excited about this opportunity and what it presents for our community and our businesses. And I would say that the, I would guess maybe hundreds of emails I've received have all, I mean, I will say, almost entirely positive about this idea. I did want to make just two quick clarifications on comments that were made tonight by, one, I did hear from, at least I did hear from at least three downtown retail businesses who were all in favor of closing the street, and one who also was excited about putting their 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 product out on the sidewalk as well. And then secondly, just on to Vice Mayor Palmer Lohan and Councilmember Olbert's comments about sort of further south on Laurel, we did discuss that with within the subcommittee and did, you know, we had heard from the Refuge, and so that was part of the reason to move down there. But if other businesses and other restaurants are interested in that, I think there's the flexibility to try and add more parklets further south. And that's something that staff and is contemplated and that we talked about at the subcommittee.
Mr. Mayor, as part of the presentation and as part of the subcommittee direction, we did survey all the restaurants in the downtown. And because of the of the lateness of the hour, I didn't present that information to you, but it, we do have it available. I could briefly tell you what we found out from our survey of all the restaurants on Laurel Street from San Carlos to Eaton, if you're interested. But again, I know it's a late hour.
Well, can you do it in 30 seconds?
I can. Crystal, if you can get me to the Laurel Street Parklet Survey summary slide. It's a few slides ahead.
Am I going the right direction?
Yes, I think so. There you go. Good. Keep going.
After the bike loops?
Yes, keep going. Right there. Okay, so you can back up one.
One more?
Well, okay, you don't, you can, okay, that's fine. Okay, so we did, we, as directed by the council subcommittee, we surveyed all 55 restaurants on Laurel Street, and we had a really good response rate. Eighteen businesses have stated that they have an interest in creating a parklet. Twelve of them are located in the 67800 blocks and six are located south of Arroyo. And one more slide, please, Crystal. And these are the restaurants that we heard from. And as you can see, some of those restaurants are in the 900, 1100, 1600 block. And you, I'm sure you recognize many of those names for some other folks that are interested in it. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Al. And finally, Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just have a quick question. So since we're moving towards voting, so I know which way to vote, which is, you know, I made that sort of comment before about what concerned me about, I want to make sure that we're not using the traditional business friendly or purely business friendly approach in this particular situation. I didn't hear any response or comments from other council members. And I would be interested in knowing what other people's views of that are because, you know, that's just me speaking. And obviously, staff's not going to and shouldn't design the encroachment process to simply meet my concerns. So I appreciate my colleagues weighing in, however they want to on that particular topic.
I'll jump in. I mean, I think that the plan that's laid out is, you know, is a good one. I think it's the enforcement piece, Mark, that you talked about that we're following up. And I don't know that, I agree with you. I don't want to get in a situation where we go backwards. And so I think it's important that we enforce and and make sure that those businesses are following the rules and that we do what we can on enforcement.
Mr. Mayor, I think the, I think what, there was, it was mentioned earlier about the the health department also doing inspections. I think that that's good news for me as the city's chief enforcement officer, because it's, they really are responsible for health inspections of restaurants anyway. So and it is their order after all. So I think the combination of the city's information campaign, the health department's ongoing inspections, which they need to do of restaurants anyway for before COVID, and our ability to use law enforcement to issue citations if we see some blatant violations, I think those, and also the ability to revoke an encroachment permit, which is a powerful economic incentive not to violate the rules. I think with the combination of all those things, it's actually going to be a fairly robust program that we have the tools to be able to convince the restaurateurs to comply with these orders, which are obviously very important. And they're structured the way they are for a reason.
Thank you, Greg. And that's very good to hear. Sarah, I apologize. We've been stepping all over your opportunity to talk.
That's okay. That's, I was very happy to hear from my colleagues. It sounds to me like, from what I hear from Greg, that the tools are available for, that can be used to to enforce, you know, compliance with the health order. So I'm I'm comfortable with that. I just, I wanted to also thank the subcommittee very much for your work. I know that was a heavy lift and staff, and I'm just so thrilled. And I know that the community is thrilled to get this off the ground. I do just want to reinforce that this is a pilot. And I would encourage anyone with a retail business like Ally who called in to please have open communication with staff. And if something isn't working, you know, we are open to hearing feedback from our downtown businesses and making adjustments. So thank you again for the hard work.
Thank you. Mark, briefly, please?
You're me, Mark.
You need to unmute yourself. There you go.
There we go. Sorry, I must have pressed the wrong button. It's late. The question I had sparked by what Greg said is, does anybody know how many health inspectors the county has? Because my instinctive, my my understanding based on years or discussion years ago is, it's not that many people because they generally aren't checking restaurants too quick, too often. But does anybody know how many they have?
Any idea, Greg?
I don't know. You know, we, you know, from, there's two, there's two different types of inspections that they do. One is, you know, the annual inspections of restaurants that get their their letter grade or their their approval that they're operating in a proper manner per regular health rules. And then there's their their special event program that I've had experience with, where they come out to the Art and Wine Fair, you know, or other or Hometown Days, and they they look at the food vendors that are out there. I would imagine, and we'll confirm this for you, Mark, that they must anticipate the need to do some more inspections, given that there's going to be outdoor dining now. And and there's, I mean, it's not, it's the COVID-19 compliance is a big part of it, but serving food outside and keeping it warm and following all the other guidelines are also important. And so I imagine they, and I'd like to confirm that they've kind of ramped up their inspections to take this into account.
Well, that's, I appreciate your your clarification of that. I guess I will tentatively support, end up tentatively supporting this motion, but I would strongly urge staff to follow up on that. And to the extent that it turns out, for whatever reason, the county is not able to either in the long run or gear up as quickly as reasonably should, for whatever reason, not blaming them, but for whatever reason, that we apply our own resources in here. I mean, as I said, this is not about tax dollars. This is about people's health and lives. And, you know, that's pretty important to me.
Mark, I just want to let you know that a merchant just must be watching, and he texted me and said that he has four in his area. So if that's four for a block, that seems like quite a bit. But I don't know how far those four people extend, but that's what I, that's what I was notified of.
Right.
Okay. Do we need to take these motions, these resolutions separately, Greg, or can we do them together?
So
They're two separate motions. You have a motion pending for the first one, I think, already.
Okay.
That's been seconded.
We have, we have, the first motion has been made and seconded, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. So, Crystal?
Councilmember Rec?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. Now, the second resolution?
So Mayor, Mayor Collins, do we want staff to review that?
Haven't had a presentation yet on it.
No, we have not. Okay.
Crystal, can you go back to the bike loop?
Yeah.
I guess.
Okay, so I'll be really brief, considering the time. So basically, we'll be talking about the bike loop. So just kind of really refresh your memory. We reached a start with two loops. And then at the last meeting, we wanted to kind of combine the loops and actually extend some legs down into a Laurel Street. So this is kind of the final, kind of the final route, if you will, where we're taking, using Cherry, Elm, St. Francis, and Cedar as kind of an outline. And then we made connections that are Royal, Britton, Howard, and then we also had extensions from these loops actually into Laurel Street. Okay, so, so part of the things, and I know we met with some of the community members in regards to the signage. I know some of the signages, you know, we're still kind of purchasing, going to be deploying, some of it will be including these kind of street paddles near crosswalks. We have to kind of share the road as well as the bicycle and ped signs. And so some of you might have seen, there's some posts, actually temporary posts that are actually going in around these route. And so, you know, we're anticipating that this was, that council would approve. And so we would actually put these share the roads and other signs out as we get them in. Let's see, we will also be installing changeable message boards. Actually, we have those. I'll need to work with the sheriff's office, but what I'd like to do is get those out probably next week. We are also having some notices to go out and working with on getting the same notices out on social media. I believe we're also going to be doing a press release. And basically, what my intentions are probably to roll this out on the weekend of the 27th of June, so it'll be 27th and 28th of June, where we invite the community to actually utilize this bike routes, you know, for family rides and what have you. And our extensions that could be on consecutive weekends where every weekend for the next three months, we probably want to do a check in. And assuming that it does continue on, you know, we would kind of run it kind of parallel to the street closure of Laurel Street, and we would actually terminate or end at the end of December of 2020. I also wanted to really quickly, I know at last meeting, there were some questions in regards, you know, what other cities have been doing with the slow streets, although slow streets are a little bit different than what we're doing. But there are really five cities that are actually doing slow streets, Regent City, San Mateo, Foster City, Burt, and Burlingame. I think I said five, you're only four. And actually, they kind of vary success. I think, or like, for instance, the Regent City, you know, it is what we're seeing. I think it had taken a little bit of time to kind of get utilization up. But from what I understand, it is doing well. In fact, they are looking to expand the slow streets program. San Mateo, similarly, I think they have one residential street. You know, they they indicated the program, pilot program was actually not doing as well. I think some of the residents are moving the signage around and causing some some issues there. But as I understand, it's gotten better over time. Foster City, actually, they they had a unique ability that to use all the road along the Betty Trail. And so that the road along the Betty Trail. And so that has worked out very, very well for them. I think it's been very positive. And then Burlingame, they actually had it near their high school. They experienced some initial problems, but they didn't really go into too much detail what those problems were. They actually suspended the program until after school let out. So they're looking to kind of resume the program again and see how it went. We also had some other cities that we pulled, South San Francisco, Bridge, Van Colma, the seventh city, Woodside. And those, those cities elected not to move forward. I think generally, they really felt that some of their streets were too narrow to do a slow streets program. I guess they really felt they'd encourage public gathering, which would be inconsistent with the health order. And then creates false sense of security. And then they really just felt that, you know, for for the way their population was kind of spread out, it really didn't work very well for them. But I think in general, from what I gather, as as more and more cities actually start using the program, their slow streets program, it seems to be working well. I think it's just a matter of time. It's like any pilot program, it takes time to kind of get up to speed to really get full utilization. So with that, I will answer any questions. So this is one of Al's slides.
Before we get to questions, Crystal, is there any public comment?
No, I don't see any callers calling in.
Okay. Any questions on this item by my fellow council members? Not seeing any. Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution 2020-39. A resolution of the City Council of San Carlos approving the streets, bicycle loop plans and ratifying the city manager's emergency authorization to purchase the materials to implement the streets bicycle loop plans. Greg, do I need to add in a deadline for review?
I'm sorry, Laura, did you, were you finished?
I just, on the last resolution, we needed to.
I don't think we need, I don't think the second resolution requires it because there's a different legal standard involved. And the closure doesn't have to have a dead end, but a deadline. But let me look at the reso. I have to pull it up on my different screen here. Because I don't know if it says that or not. Why am I not pulling that up? I'm sorry. Have to go to the appendix.
Greg, I believe the resolution does talk about the end of the year.
Okay, thanks for finding that for me. It's just really hard for me to navigate with this computer that I've got here. So if it says to the end of the year, then you don't have to add a date.
Okay, great. All right, so moved.
I'll second.
You're muted, Ron.
I said I, we have a motion and a second. I don't see hands, any hands raised for discussion. I do now. Hello, Mark.
Ron, hang on a second. Oh, I guess I was unmuted. Sorry, I was trying to figure out why I look so orange.
Me too.
Isn't this the way that I normally look? I'll have to change my tanning compound, I guess. I wish this experiment much success. It's better than nothing. I'm going to be voting against it because frankly, it doesn't do what I think we ought to be doing, which is to increase safety by having a broader based slow streets program. Nor will it gather the information that we need by itself to actually decide whether we should do a slow streets program, which, based on my reading of the material staff had collected, actually seems to be doing quite well in the communities that have tried it. So I wish the program success, but I'm going to be voting against this because frankly, it just, I think our vision should be bigger.
Thank you, Mark. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Obert?
No.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay, I want to, I want to offer a change. In the interest of time, we still have four or five items left. I wonder if there's any objection to continuing item 10C to the next meeting? Is there a strong objection to doing that? Is there any objection at all?
Through the chair, I have no objection to doing that. If unless there's a shot clock on it, I frankly wouldn't object to continuing everything to a meeting as quickly as we can arrange something. I don't think it's just me. I've sort of noticed listening to everybody, we're all getting a little punchy.
Yes, we are. I have been promised that items D and E are short. And and just Laura, were you the one that pulled seven I?
Yeah, I'm I'm fine with moving that item to the next meeting. I would like us personally to continue the rest of the discussion for the items if we can get through it.
Okay, are you saying that you would like to continue seven I to the next meeting as well?
I don't think that would take very long, that particular item.
All right, why don't we, we'll keep it in. It seems like, it appears that it's probably not a long item.
No.
All right, so everybody's okay with continuing 10C to the next meeting?
Yes, Chair.
Yeah.
I just, off topic, I again have gotten a text message from somebody who had wanted, I'm not suggesting we go back, just so staff is aware of this, they had wanted to make a public comment on the bicycle thing that we just voted on, but they were unable to get through. So I passed it. Maybe there's a problem someplace.
All right, well, to the caller, I apologize that we could not take your call or that you could not get through. Okay, so I don't, we just need a general agreement that we move item 10C to the next meeting?
And move that we move item 10C to the next meeting.
Second.
We have a, I have a motion and a second.
That's fine.
Okay, I, yes. Greg, is that satisfactory?
I think if, I think we, I'm hearing that the council unanimously decided to do that. So let the record reflect that unanimously decided to do that. That's what's required.
Okay, great, thank you. Let's move on to 10D. This is consideration of adopting a resolution, adopting the amended salary and benefit resolution for the management group for the period of July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021.
Good evening, Council. Still, oh gosh, two minutes till good morning. Crystal, if you could bring up my PowerPoint presentation, please. I think it's just one slide on this. Might be two. Next slide, please. Okay, as the council, as the council knows, the city has been talking with its unrepresented management and its unrepresented confidential group, who had an existing salary and benefit resolution in place that would have covered this coming year and had a 3% cost of living adjustment scheduled to take place in July. Council asked those groups to have a discussion with us about lowering some of the compensation. And the employees are in in agreement here with what's listed here for the management group, which would be, there will be no 3% COLA now in July of 2020. The deferred comp match program for management up to $400 a month would be canceled. And we would have a hard cap put in place of two years of accrual. That's not two years, but their accrual of two years capped with a one-time payout of anything that's over that cap currently. This will have a net savings to the city's budget of $365,000 on an annual basis. Next slide, please. Basically, the same element, the elements are virtually the same for confidential, slightly different. They had had a larger cost of living adjustment scheduled to 3.5%, but had a lower deferred comp match program. This is a smaller group than the management group. So the savings here are estimated to be $80,000 a year ongoing. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Jeff? All right. We need a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution 2020-40. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, adopting the amended salary and benefit resolution for the management group for the period July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I see no hands raised.
There will be one second.
Do we need to ask about public comment?
I'm going to ask, I don't believe there's public, Crystal, is there public comment on this item?
There's no way for me to tell.
So. So why don't we take that caller now?
Okay. Good evening, Sonia Elks. Thank you for joining us still. You have actually one minute. Our mayor is asking that callers right now have one minute to make their public comments, and you are now unmuted.
Hi, City Council, this is Sonia Elks. I just want to let you know many, many people have been waiting to talk. And the time to call in flips by. Ron says it's public comment time, then we have to type in the whole number, then we have to wait for the prompt, then we have to do the numbers. It's a process to get ahold of you. So we've been waiting five hours to talk with many people on this topic. So I would be grateful if you could move it to, along with the other thing to your next agenda, if that's happening to your next meeting soon.
The salary and benefit resolution?
I think she's talking about the bicycle issue.
Bicycle loop that was adopted.
She dropped out of the call.
It sounds, it sounds like we have a technical issue about how people get in that we need to fix because it's not a good idea to have a whole bunch of people want to wait five hours and then we can't.
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounds like there was a window missed for some reason for these folks to get in.
All right, well, to all who are still watching or listening, we welcome you. Hopefully, we'll get that issue solved at the next council meeting. And we welcome your comments at that time, even though they'll sort of be after the fact. But they won't be unheard or are unconsidered because these are programs that can be changed in the future. So I don't want anybody to think that their comment won't be valuable. Okay, Mark?
Yes.
Your hand is raised?
Yes, I'm going to be voting against this resolution. And but I want to explain why briefly because that sounds odd. Upon further reflection, after all the discussion we've had previously, I believe actually there's an opportunity that we could provide some kind of modest pay increase for people or maybe even provide the one that they agreed to give up. And I think actually, given the uncertainty that many people are facing these days, that would be a reasonable thing to consider doing. And so I can't support the proposed item. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have a, I'm sorry, I'm losing it. We have a motion and a second, correct?
Yes.
Crystal?
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
No.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes, okay, moving on to 10E, which is consideration of adopting a resolution, adopting the amended salary and benefit resolution for the confidential group for the period July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, there's no additional report or information other than what was just provided in the prior report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, I see no questions. Is there a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution 2020-41. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, adopting the amended, adopting the amended salary and benefit resolution for the confidential group for period July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Second, all right. Any discussion?
Yes.
And? Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Same comment as before. After further consideration, I believe that we could be able to afford to provide some much-needed support for these hardworking members of our team. And so I am going to vote no on this resolution.
All right, thank you. Crystal?
Vice Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
No.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay, let's move back to item 7I. Laura, I think you asked for this to be pulled. This is declaring a city council summer recess and authorized cancellation of the July 27, 2020 and August 10, 2020 council.
Yes, so thank you. So I recognize that staff has been working very hard and my concern with this as it's proposed is just that, given, you know, the fact that we've got COVID-19 and many of the work that we've been able to do has been, you know, compromised as a result of responding to COVID-19, wanting to make sure that we address the communities and the city's business in a timely manner and figuring that we may have to get caught up on some. So I might suggest that we cancel, propose canceling July 27th, but then leave August up to the discretion of the city manager, depending upon how the summer workload goes and how efficient and effective we can be.
Okay, Mark, your thoughts?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question, actually, for either Greg or Jeff. What's the latest that we can cancel a meeting? I know traditionally, we do it around this time, but could we leave them on the calendar? And then if there's nothing to discuss three days beforehand or a week beforehand, we cancel it?
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's a part of our, Jeff, part of our agenda process. I mean, we'll know more than just a few days before a meeting if there's no agenda.
Right, I was going to say there's kind of two answers to that question. I think, one, you can cancel a meeting, you know, right up to the moment of the meeting, depending on, you know, why you're canceling it. But I would say in terms of where I think you're going with that question, I think it would probably be the Wednesday before our council meeting, which would be typically the day we would send the agenda out to you.
Right, you had a chance to talk to the mayor about what's going to be on there or whatnot.
Right, because at that point, if I don't have an agenda for you, I really wouldn't be able to get one together anyway, right?
Um, yeah, thank you. So Laura, you know, I'm just sort of building on what you're suggesting. Maybe what we do is we take no action on this item and basically play it by ear and just if need be, cancel it the Wednesday before. As Jeff was just saying.
Yeah, I think, I mean, the spirit of this, I think, is to provide some, a little bit of planning ahead of time. I know, I know staff has been really great about their long-range agenda planning and I'm comfortable with accepting the request for cancellation of the 27th. But I know as we move into the summer and move into the budgeting process. So that's kind of what I'm thinking.
Okay, Greg, maybe you could give us some guidance here on what we do with this item?
I think you just, if someone can make a motion to, if that was the form of a motion by Councilmember Palmer Lohan, she could turn that into an official motion, it could be seconded, and then you could vote on it. That's the most expeditious way to move it forward. Or make a motion as Mark, as Councilmember Obert is suggesting.
So Adam has his hand up. I don't know.
Yes, I was gonna go to him next and then we'll come back. Adam?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. And I just want to, I prefer to support.
Thank you, and I just want to, I prefer to support, Mark, I hear what you're saying on things. I also want to give some flexibility to staff to be able to try to plan for some vacation, you know, some of the people working on this that we've been going through, they've been dealing with sort of the COVID-19 and who knows what vacation's going to look like. But I'd like to let something in place that people can do some planning. I like the idea of canceling one, but keeping the other one to the discretion of the city manager.
Okay, so. You want to put that in the form of a motion, Laura?
Yeah, so I move to cancel the July 27 city council meeting and leave the August 10 city council meeting at the discretion of the city manager, depending upon workload.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. I see no other hands raised. Mark?
Just briefly, since I've never been a fan, actually, of our summer recess process, I'll be voting no on this procedure.
Okay, Crystal?
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
No.
Vice Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay, we are through items nine and 10. And so we are at 11. Any additional council communications and announcements? This is reflections and agenda setting. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only have two, one agenda setting and one observation. And I thought I had other agenda setting things, but it is so bloody late that I can't remember what they are. Or maybe it's early. The observation I was going to ask is, I would appreciate it if we can do going forward, maybe there's something about these virtual meetings, if you could do something forward, doing a little bit better job of not having meetings run until 12:30? Because if we go into closed session, that's how long it's probably going to be. I don't think that serves any of our interests. I'm not blaming anybody for it. These things happen. This is a new environment for us, but we have to learn from it and try not to have this happen again. The agenda item I wanted to bring up, and I'll just mention it now, and maybe we should talk about it further at the next meeting. We've all gotten a flurry of emails from some very concerned citizens about the way law enforcement is done nationwide and frankly, still in San Mateo County. I believe that we owe it to all of our residents to basically do a, or make sure that a public review of how law enforcement functions and the choices that are made, you know, for example, about the militarization of police, get adequately addressed. That doesn't necessarily mean we're going to change anything, but because we may all learn something in the process that things aren't quite the way we thought they were. But I think there'd be a lot of value in that. Whether we take the lead on it as an individual city or whether we get the sheriff's department to launch something for all of their, all of the territories that they support, either one is fine with me. But one way or another, I really feel that we have to do more than just, as important as it is, we have to do more than asserting what our values are and sort of looking askance at everybody else in the country going, boy, are they all screwed up, without at least looking at our own house to make sure we're actually comfortable, everything's in order.
So are you, you're suggesting that we have an agenda item at a future meeting?
Yes, and probably initially, Ron, to discuss how to go about doing what I just described because there's, it's, to do it right would be complicated, or maybe not complicated, be somewhat involved. And it's kind of late right now to talk about, you know, details of it. So maybe the agenda item is just, let's discuss whether we want to have such a review and if so, how would we do it?
Adam, and then Sarah.
I would agree with wanting to do something around this issue. We've obviously heard from a lot of the community. I'm open to how we do that. I would like to, you know, maybe build on the chief's presentation to get more educated on some of the policies, maybe as a first step, and then we can kind of delve into it past that. But something along those lines, I'd be supportive of.
Sarah?
Thank you, Mayor. I support that, too, bringing it back to a future meeting for us to discuss. I also wanted to follow up on one thing that we all touched on at the beginning of the meeting. And my request is to be brought back to council for future consideration, a letter to our state legislators and the governor in support of any state legislation designed to help support our school system financially and something that possibly all five of us could sign on to. Thank you.
Okay, Laura?
Yep, you're muted, Laura.
That was the best speech I ever gave.
Sorry. That was funny.
So I just want to build on what Sarah said. So I agree with that. I'm still going to move forward with my independent letter just because the vote will take place on June 15th. But I'm open to just exploring further communications from council in that regard. In addition, I'm also in favor of having a review of police policy. The thing I heard from the community over and over again was something called eight can't wait. So eight specific policing policies. I think it would be interesting if the sheriff's department effectively at the county level could provide us with a review of those policing policies. I know Chief Jury did an excellent job tonight of explaining much of what's done. I think the framework that the community is looking at is this eight can't wait model. In addition, if consideration could be given to some sort of community engagement. So I think that's the start of the conversation. But I think that, you know, that's one aspect of it. We also touched a little bit on that, for example, the affordable housing issue tonight. And I think that there's likely other things that we can do as a community to listen and understand how we can be more inclusive as a community. What are those policies that we need to really reflect on and change? Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Adam, 30 seconds.
30 seconds, I didn't want to, I want to support Sarah's motion. I'll be doing my own letter because it sounds like with Brown Act, we've got some issues on that. And I just wanted to just reiterate what I said earlier today about sort of looking at a sister city that we can look at, you know, within the US. And I'd love to agendize something like that so we can sort of start a community conversation with a city that has a more, is more, more black majority city potentially.
I would support Adam's idea. You know, I don't want to, Adam, and I don't mean this as a negative on your idea. I don't want to be distracted from some of the other things, which I think are more significant, but I agree that that's, that's sort of a good thing for us to do.
Adam, could I ask you to maybe bring that up at the next meeting? Because it looks like we've got two more agenda items that we were adding to a future meeting?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Sufficient direction, Jeff? Okay, I see a nod. All right.
You're muted, Matt. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the next agenda item will be related to the police and eight can't wait. It will be sort of an introductory catch-all item where the council will have the opportunity to sort of flesh out a little bit more about the individual areas that you'd like to see covered.
Correct.
Like a community meeting or that, that sort of thing, a future council item that has the potential for action. So it would be kind of a first step item. Just want to make sure I have that right because there's a lot of moving parts, but we'll piece it all together to make sure that the agenda item reflects that and it can all be discussed.
That, that's what I heard. And then also Sarah brought up putting a letter, having a letter that we all would sign going to the state.
Yes.
Regarding school funding? Sarah?
Yes, correct.
All right.
Right.
Okay, any other comments before we move on to staff comments on city administrative business?
Ron, could I just, one thing, we've had some technical issues on these meetings. So, and tonight, I know it sounds like there was many community members that were trying to dial in and couldn't. So if staff could just take another look under the hood and try to better understand how we can run these more fluidly, right? So that people do have access, because I know these were some hot topics tonight that many people wanted to comment on. And I'm sorry that we didn't, we weren't able to hear their perspectives.
Yeah, I was going to ask the city clerk if maybe what we could do is at the beginning of every item, put up the call-in slide. And we'll leave it there for a minute while we kind of introduce the item. And, or maybe we can minimize it or something so that it's kind of there in the bottom corner or something. So that people sort of could be calling in for the whole length of the item rather than feel like it's all of a sudden it's public comment moment within the item.
Correct, maybe we just leave it in the lower corner of the screen or something.
Okay.
So we'll experiment with that for the next meeting.
Terrific. All right. I think, are we are ready to move into closed session?
Wait a minute, I haven't made my report yet. I was going to read the first, first chapter of War and Peace. Settle back, everybody. I have nothing additional to report this evening, Mr.
Good, I was thinking you're not even letting you.
Okay, I'm sending you.
We're now going to go into closed session. Greg, any other notice I should, no, I guess not. I'm just going to go.
No, we'll go to closed session and then we'll, I don't think there's going to be a report out, so we're good.